Okay, so seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting of the Ordinance Committee to order it being 6:35, March 22nd, I mean April 26th at 6:35. Sorry about my technical difficulties. I like in-person better, but I'm remote for a couple more meetings. Anyway, I know we're here with the Planning Board. Is our Planning Board with us yet?
I believe so.
I see Rosanna and Mimi in the Zoom.
Some of the members will be walking over to the Council Chamber. They're probably trying to get into the building.
Yes, they're here now.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, do we have our petitioner here for Item 1, Yolani Breen?
Do we have Yolani Breen?
I did invite him, sent him the information.
But he is not here with us now?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess we'll have to leave that tabled, or I'll entertain a motion to table it.
Motion to table item number one.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So if the Planning Board is coming in, then we'll just let them come in. And in the meantime, I'll see if I can get in on my computer.
Linda, can you hear me? It's Kevin.
Yes.
I did want to ask one question about Yolani Breen. That was tabled at the last meeting because that individual did not show up. So now we're another meeting that that individual perhaps has not showed up. How many more meetings are we going to go before we say, "Have a nice day"?
Um, I think that's a reasonable question. And Jeffrey, if I could ask you to follow up with that person, and if we don't hear back from them, we'll just give it leave to withdraw without prejudice until we hear from him, okay?
Sure, I will. I'll continue to try to get in touch with him. He, yeah, I sent him two or three emails between the last time and this time, letting him know that his petition had come to this meeting after being tabled the last time, and he never responded to any of them.
Oh, okay, well, all right. Thank you very much. And I will do what the will of the committee is if we want to give him one more try.
I don't have a strong opinion, but I would say three strikes, you're out if he doesn't show up at the next meeting.
That sounds fair to me.
Motion to table item 1?
Yes, it has been tabled.
Okay.
Hey, Linda.
Yes?
Am I able to motion to take up item number 2? Or are we still waiting?
We're waiting for the Planning Board?
They're here, I believe. They have a quorum.
I under...
Yeah, Counselor, there's a couple are in remotely, and there's few of us here in the chamber, so we do have a quorum.
Oh, okay, all right. If there is a quorum, then absolutely. I'll entertain a motion to take up item 2 and open the public hearing.
So motion to take up item 2 and open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just had a motion from the Planning Board to open a public hearing to discuss a zone change from DR to BH, 41 Temple Street. Mr. Daniel Laflamme is the applicant.
Um, we have a little bit of confusion. Item 2 on my agenda is the continued public hearing of the Planning Board relative to the length.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got your, I've got, I was going for our agenda, Counselor, so let me, all right.
Well, I can, I can just ask my committee to go to item 3 if that's easier. Or actually, you're on our item 4.
Item to take up item 4? I mean, motion to take up item 4.
Okay, so we have a motion to take up item 4 and open the public hearing for the zone change application from DR to BH for Daniel Laflamme at 41 Temple Street to operate a truck repair shop in District Zone DR so the business can be conforming. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, once again, for the Planning Board, you have a motion on the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Chair, would you please call the roll?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John Kelly? Mr. Kelly, is there a representative there?
Yes, I think there is. Does the applicant want to come forward and present to the Joint Boards their application?
Yes, we would like to give the floor to the applicant to hear his overview.
Test.
And once again, reminding folks at a public hearing, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Attorney Thomas Wilson. My new address as of Friday will be 1693 North Hampton Street. And this is Daniel Laflamme, the owner of the property on Temple Street. Mr. Laflamme is owned, and his family is involved in the trucking and repair business. He has been, owned this property since 2009, I believe. And he bought it as a bankruptcy sale from the bankruptcy court. And from what I understand, that he does not do major repairs there. I'm going to let him tell you what goes on because he's there more than I am.
Hello. So what we do is that we buy and sell used trucks. I have a used car license in Chicopee. We do a small amount of repairs at the Chicopee location. But the shop in Holyoke Court is in question, at 41 Temple, is two large bays. And what we do is we buy and sell trucks. We take them, you know, and fix them and check them out if need, you know, any small repairs need to be done. We do have a couple of small accounts. We don't advertise. We just do word of mouth, like a couple of small accounts, like I said. So we're not looking to have any kind of lighting, any kind of signage. Just keep it very low-key residential, looking like it's been the last 13 years since we've owned it. We've done major renovations and upgraded the house next to it as well. I purchased and completely went through it as well. We try to be very, very good neighbors to all the other neighbors in the area. We do snow plowing, clean the leaves. I mean, it goes on and on. Pick up trash. It's just, we're good neighbors. It's just, I'd like to try to stay there if possible. And like I said, just everything's very low-key and quiet. We don't work on the weekends. We do very minimal work. Like, we start 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning till roughly 5:30, 6:00 at night. And like I said, nothing, just no late hours, no 24 hours. That's pretty much it.
No large trucks wrapping off other trucks?
No, no.
Noisy trucks, for lack of a better word. So he's been here, and this is what we're trying to do is remedy a situation that he now would have this, he would now have that zone. He would now have the zone change, and he would be effectually, for lack of a better word, he would be, not legal, but he would be more in tune with what the neighborhood. He would be keeping the neighborhood clean, but he would be able to do his business and keep his business there. Otherwise, there's a chance he might have to, if this doesn't work, he might have to move a business.
So Attorney Wilson, it's Linda Bacon here. If I can just jump in?
Yes, I can hear you, yes.
Thank you. Is the current business owner now operating under a non-conforming use on the property that has existed over time?
Unfortunately, he has. I don't want to say anything. He has. I think he just, when he bought it, he bought it, as I said, not from a buyer, but from the bankruptcy court. And I believe when he found out that this happened, he approached the Building Department and, is that right? And they told him he had to apply for the zone change.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, and maybe somebody in Planning can help out because I thought if a non-conforming use had been happening, that in that case, it could continue. But maybe somebody from Planning can answer that.
Madam Chair?
Yes? Counselor Givner?
I have just one question. It's my understanding that you would need this to be, what is this, a BH zone, like a Business Highway in order to, like, work on vehicles? Is that correct?
So usually, that would be correct. But every so often, there had been a business endeavor operating before the zoning went into effect.
I see.
And so if that non-conforming use occurred before the zoning went into effect, and it continued to be used in that way, then in those cases, it's my understanding they could keep operating. But that's what I'd like to have somebody from Planning tell us more specifically.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, right now, it is Zone DR Downtown Residential District. And the business he's operating in DR Zone is not allowed at all by rider, even by special permit of the City Council. So that's why he's asking to have a change to BH, which is Business Highway. Of course, Business Highway usually is Business Highway. This is not really anywhere near a Business Highway where it's located. But in order for him to be able to legally operate, he'd have to get it zoned to Business Highway. And then, if you look at Business Highway uses, he would have to have this, I believe, approved motor vehicle repair, et cetera, would still have to be special permit of the City Council. So there's kind of a, like a two-step process.
So are you aware of the non-conforming use exceptions that happened when the business was there before the zoning changed? Does that apply in this case?
What acceptance?
The, so in some cases, and we had one that came before us a number of years ago, if a business was operating before the zoning was put into effect, they were considered to be a non-conforming use, but they were allowed because they had been there prior to the zoning. And I was wondering if that applied to this particular property. And maybe Attorney Wilson knows that answer. It's just a question.
Counselor Bacon, this was for years. It was King's Trucking, and I believe Baskin Trucking was right in the same area next door. And those went on.
And I will admit that my client, for two years, this building was not used
because it was actually in the, the purpose in which it owned it filed bankruptcy. And actually, the bankruptcy court had it for about a year and a half before they sold it for, to my client. So it was, unfortunately, the business didn't go along for those two years because the gentleman not only lost this building, he lost his house, and he went bankrupt, but it took, like all the courts at the same time.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rivera?
I noticed Mimi has her hand raised. I wanted to say something, but I would love for her to speak before I do, if anything.
Okay, well, that's for the Planning Board Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly, yep?
Go ahead, Mimi.
I was just going to say that pre-existing non-conforming use is definitely a thing. And we would have to look at the history of what's been there because it is easily lost when there's a lapse in use. So we would have to look at when the zoning was imposed and what actually has been on the property. And I think we're happy to do that. But we're just hearing this for the first time, so we didn't have the dates previously.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
I guess I was going to say, with regards to, like, neighbors and people in the community, like, how they felt about it. I got a couple, I don't know if they're letters or whatnot here, of some people opposing to it because of what the impact that could possibly happen in the future. I mean, I don't know, I don't live in that area. I'm not close by there, so I wouldn't know whether or not it would be causing an issue. But I would just want to have them heard too as well.
Yes, and certainly, as part of the public hearing, we will have the opportunity for people in favor or opposed to this project and also comments, yes.
May I, I'm sorry, may I speak? I don't know who I ask, but...
Attorney Wilson?
Yes. One of the things is that, and this is not, in the street, if you go down Main Street where this is, there are businesses. There's restaurants, there's businesses, there's, there's a computer store, there's other things in that area that are just half a block away from where he is. And there's, there was a school that was a, and it was a few other things now that's sitting vacant. But, and I, you know, I think we have a lot of neighbors here who would like to, you know, talk about my client and ask the thing with the issue of the permit, with the zone change. Yes, that probably is true, but whoever does it has to apply for permits and everything anyway. So there is, it's not like an opening thing where he just moves in and says, "I'm here." There are some controls.
Right.
Chair Bacon, it's Counselor McGivern. Can I, through you, ask a question?
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Just through the chair, a question to the Planning Board, or if anyone could answer this. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the neighbors that are here tonight. But first, just for transparency, King's Trucking was the last business on this property, is what I just heard? And if that's true? If that's true, you know, King's Trucking, I know, was there for a long time, probably, maybe even pre-zoning itself. My, I'm curious as to why Downtown Residential, which is relatively new, would be applied to this zone for a piece of property that was not part of Downtown Residential in when it comes to use? It doesn't, doesn't make sense.
I know, we're, we're hearing this for the first time tonight, too, Counselor, and I don't know, but that's my understanding. That's what the current zone is on. I'll have to go back and maybe do some history research as to how it is zoned.
I mean, I think it's important for the discussion to get that history.
Sure.
Because it, you know, it's just, you know, throwing a DR on top of a zone with no purpose, you know, is a hardship to the, you know, to the prior owner, I guess. But is the Planning Director here? Do we have anyone from Planning?
Yeah, we have staff from Planning, yep.
The only thing, if I may, Jeff Burkhart, if I could just offer that. When the DR came out of the master plan, so you're looking at around 2,000, when that was DR Zone came into effect, and this at the time was not a licensed or special permitted use. So perhaps when, previously, DR was RM 60. So the idea was to kind of get rid of the RM 60 zones. This could have been that scenario where they, when the, when the committee looked at the area for the zone changes out of the master plan, they didn't see a business here. They saw a house because there was no permitted or licensed business here, despite what King Brothers may have had.
Thank you, Jeff. I think that shed some light. Not so much to the DR, but it does shed some light. Thank you.
If there's nobody else on the committee that wants to be heard, can we hear?
I'd like to speak.
Counselor, I've got a Planning Board member has a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kate.
Just to speak to the DR, I don't know. Jeff, can you or Sharon pull up the zoning map? Because it's, I mean, the entire neighborhood is Zone DR currently. It's not that this property in particular is Zone DR, but it's part of a large swath of DR. So changing this to BH would be a spot zone, arguably. So all of that that's pink is DR.
It'd be helpful to zoom out a little, see just how much of that DR there is. Oh, yeah.
I guess my question is, what is the, for lack of a better word, what is the, maybe not the harm of this, not of the zone? What, I mean, it's not a new business going in there. He's been there for several years. He's just going to do the same thing. I don't know what the, I mean, if it was, I guess if it was, and I guess this is where we come to ask the neighbors, I think, too, that they're the people going to live there, and he's just going to do what he's kept doing. He's not going to change his business or anything. And if he did, he'd need to get, come probably before the permits and the Planning Board to do anything else. So there are protections.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor McGivern?
The only thing I would add to the changing and zoning for that area is that since it is in the middle of a neighborhood, we would essentially be creating like a Business Highway in the center of a neighborhood. And once that zoning is changed to that, it's not that easy to revert back. So that would be my concern, but I do think we need to hear from the neighbors as well. So, Counselor Bartley?
Madam Chair, if we're sharing the map, can I ask a question about the map?
Sure.
Just to the Planning Board, I can see the map, and I understand the concept of DR. And I remember when it was done across the board for a lot of neighborhoods. But this particular neighborhood has been mixed use for as long as most of us have been alive. On Temple Street is Springdale Machine Company.
They're industrial, that's IG Zone, industrial.
Okay, so we have a business on Temple Street in an IG Zone. Thank you.
So Kevin Jordan here, can I ask a question?
Counselor Bacon, I think, I see Counselor Bartley has his hand up. I think, I think Ms. Lopez at the Planning Board has a question, too.
I think we may have lost Linda.
Well, Counselor Bartley, why don't you go ahead?
No, John, why don't you have your?
Okay, Rosanna, why don't you go ahead, then?
Hold on, Rosanna, you're, yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I speak? Okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Coke McGovern said. I feel as though it's opening a portal. And in the Planning Board, we've seen this reoccurring where we make exceptions because it just makes sense, and then it creates a ripple effect. And being that it is primarily residential, I have concerns with that zone being changed.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes. Are we, what are you, who's the vice chair of this committee? Okay, so...
So I believe I'm back in business, folks. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
You're back in charge, Counselor.
Sorry about that.
I think Counselor Bartley was just going to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, just a, I'm going to make a small point of order. I think when we have a technical difficulty, the vice chair should probably just grab the bull by the horns. You know, you just got to, you just got to do it. And then, and then I heard, I, what Commissioner Lopez just said, crack it. Because, Counselor McGivern, just through the chair, Counselor McGivern, what was your name for Counselor Leahy when he was, when his?
Well, now we got Givner, McGivern, McGovern.
I said McGovern, so I got to remember that one. I forgot what.
I can't, I can't repeat Counselor Leahy's name.
No, no. If I could, I just want to make a comment, Madam Chair, and then, well, actually, I'd rather, I'd rather, can we hear from Legal on a question that I have, and then I want to make a comment? So my, I just want to know what, it's just through the, if they'd make a motion. I would just like to know what the consequence is of a spot zone because I've heard the term "spot zone" a couple of times. And I'm hopeful that if we could spend, have Legal talk to us about the consequence to, you know, certainly to the city and to the, and then to the petitioner for having a spot zone. Because this looks like it's probably a spot zone. But if it is, okay, so we admit it's a spot zone, so what? I just want to, I just want to understand what's the, what's the consequence? And so, once I get that answered, Madam Chair, I just want to make a quick comment, if I may.
Have you got another Planning Board member?
So, I don't know if Legal's here?
If we have Legal to jump in? You have Mike Bissonette around?
I see Attorney Deggnan.
Kathy, there she is.
If this is a spot zone, legally speaking, there, that litigation could ensue because we're not supposed to do spot zoning. I'm not saying that this is. I'm trying to get my mind around it to understand what's happening. But yeah, there is potential liability for the city.
Okay, so, thank you. I just, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to make a quick comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Bartley, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll just, thank you. I just, so, so there's potential liability for the city. So, so I was just through the chair to Attorney Deggnan. How is it, or do you issue an opinion as to whether this is spot zoning so that you can guide us? I assume you would do that before we took a vote?
If you wanted to table this and refer this to Legal for legal opinion, yes, that's something that we can do.
Well, yeah.
I don't know enough about it to do it now.
Yeah, fair point. So that's something that the committee could take, I'm not on the committee, but the committee could potentially consider doing that. And then I just, you know, depending on how this comes out, whether, you know, look, if there's liability to the city on a spot zone, I guess we have to, you know, defer to the Law Department. But I would only just add, just for your consideration, just what Mr. Kelly said and what Attorney Wilson said is that this is, this is the precursor, is the zone change. The real, the real deal is on the special permit. And so that's where, that's where the City Council and this committee in particular gets to put on conditions that affect the business and protect the, protect the abutters. So I would hope that, first of all, I hope it's not a spot zone. But if there is a spot zone, this body could potentially mitigate the concerns for the abutters by adding any necessary conditions to the, to a special permit that would allow the gentleman to operate his business, and it would, it would help the abutters to enjoy the residential neighborhood. So I just ask that you consider that. Thank you.
May I speak?
Thank you, Counselor Bartley. And if I could add to Attorney Deggnan, perhaps you could take a look at the zone change that we did to IG for the marijuana entity to see how that might inform us relative to this, if there's any similarities. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I see Mr. Gernander has a comment or question for the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Daniel. Daniel, you say you have two bay. Are there a large bay where you can fit, like, the bigger tractor, the Hootoe, the 18-wheeler? Or just a small box truck? How big's your bay is?
Small box truck, no tractor trailers.
So like, you know, what size-wise, you would say, like, those trucks can fit in there?
Like a large G-Wall truck, 24-foot mark.
24 footer you can fit there. So changing the zone, just my opinion, from DR to BH, so mean, he can, we can allow him to bring a 24-footer truck to his bay and to that neighborhood? That's all of my concerns. Thank you.
May, I don't think this is my, but I guess one of the other questions is what Counselor McGivern brought up, and we've known that this has been... and we've known that this has been what it is since pre-zoning. I think the zoning in Holyoke was nineteen sixty-five or nineteen seventy-two, I can't remember, but, whatever it is, from what my understanding is, King's Garage or King's Trucking has been there since forever, not forever, but, for pre-zoning, and I guess that's an answer.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
But, Attorney, you said that there was a lapse of more than two years, yes?
But it was, it was, I guess my thing, it was a lapse, but it was, in other words, this person filed bankruptcy, and the court took, the bankruptcy court took control of all the property until they, it was a case that had a lot of motions, and I've seen it, and eventually, they allowed, the court allowed the bankruptcy trustee, Gary Weiner, to sell this building.
But you understand that the lapse of two years would mean that it was no longer a pre-existing use, right?
You're...
The lapse of two years means that it's, it didn't continue as that sort of business?
But I don't know if it's a lapse because somebody took the building over from him, somebody, Legal, it's not like he sold the building, and it sat empty, he was not, no one was allowed to use that building.
I think it would be useful, probably, for us to also get opinion from Legal about that, because my understanding is that the lapse of use for two years would mean that it was no longer a pre-existing use. I'd like to, I'd like to know that from Legal, because my understanding would be it wouldn't be allowed as a pre-existing use if it had lapsed for that long.
Mr. Kelly, we have hands raised from Jeff Burkott, Jack Carroll, and Rosanna, and I see that Tessa Murphy-Rambletti also has her hand up.
And Murphy, and Counselor Bartley in the chambers.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, why don't you have your crew go first?
Okay, who?
Why don't we go for planning?
Okay, go ahead.
Who do you want to go first?
Well, who's from planning, I can't see clearly.
I'm gonna go with Jeff.
Okay, Jeff.
So, I've got, so, for words, where zoning came to the city in around nineteen oh four, and right here is the official hand-drawn map from nineteen forty-one that was present to nineteen seventy-one. This area historically has been zoned residential since then, back then it was known as the residential C, but that area, for instance, of that machine shop was zoned, let's see, that was actually zoned Business B back from nineteen forty-one through nineteen seventy-one, but this area in particular was all zoned residential since then.
Madam Chair, I had a question, oh, there's a bunch of people, forget it.
The map, but that's for information, please.
Thank you, Jeff. Who else from planning had their?
Yep, we have Jack.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
I'd just like to point out, as not only a representative of the Planning Department, but also the License Board, this business does not hold, this business is required to hold a license for motor vehicle repair from the Holyoke License Board, and this business currently, nor in any recent history, has held a license from the License Board for this type of use. So, just pointing that out there, this is an unlicensed business.
So, we have Counselor Murphy-Rambletti in the queue?
I also had Rosanna still from the planning.
Okay. Well, Counselor Bartley's been patient, so, all right, he's more patient.
Sorry, Bartley, I'll be quick.
Okay.
Those were my concerns, actually, because if this was a registered business, we wouldn't be here, right? Because this would already be in play, and second of all, I have health concerns with the neighbors, right? Because now, if we open this gateway to change the zoning, you could use multiple vehicles, right? And Gunnar said also, a twenty-foot vehicle, so now, that's a lot of pollution and a lot of traffic, heavy traffic, for that small area, because there's a bunch of condos right next to it. So, both people kinda said what I wanted to say, but I was curious if it was a registered business already, because if it was, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Counselor Bartley?
Thank you. Counsel Murphy-Rambletti?
Okay, I, do you wanna go, Dave? I can go quickly.
All right, yeah, please.
Okay, thank you, so, thank you to everyone for all of the feedback, I'm learning a lot, and I am gonna be really grateful to hear what the Law Department says about whether or not this is spot zoning. That would be my major concern, because it seems to me on its face that it might be. But, the other comments about whether or not, if this doesn't get approved, I believe it's my understanding that this would require a special permit, based on what I've heard. So, I know that there, we were talking about criteria that should be followed, and for what it's worth, some of the things that I learned when working in that office was just about Section nine, three, two, about criteria, and it outlines that these are the things that we should be taking into account. Special permits granted by the Special Permit Granting Authority, they, we should consider, you know, social, economic, community needs, traffic flow and safety. There's a bunch, there's different lists, and, you know, I just think it's important that that's, if we do get to that point, you know, that's one way that we should be, I think we should be just following this for every special permit that we issue, so, I just wanted to make note of that, and thank everyone for their thoughts.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I thank you, Madam Chair, and this wasn't what I was gonna speak on, but I just wanna follow up on what Tessa just said, because she just raises an unbelievably important point. So, in nine point three point two, which I've quoted, I can't tell you how many times, that is written so broadly, but it's a beautiful section of the ordinance, which is a law, that allows the City Council to put any kind of reasonably related condition it deems fit onto a business that's applying for a special permit, so I just think that that's really important. So, if you want to limit hours, noise, parking, trap, I mean, all that stuff can be, can be limited under nine three two, so I just thank you for pointing that out. Just, if I may, through the vice chair and the chair, to the Law Department, I think, Kathy, what we're hearing is that the two-year limit, so, I think those have been here, I mean, we realize that if the use kind of expired, and there's a period of two years, then, then the pre-existing prior use most likely goes away, Kathy, but I just wanna point out one thing, that this parcel came out of bankruptcy, so, that is a very unique area of law, where all proceedings, everything relative to bankruptcy matter, once it's filed, is stayed, so the clock completely stops, as if nothing ever happened with, relative to any matter concerning the petitioner, whether it's in Chapter seven or thirteen, or eleven, whatever it is, doesn't matter, nine, whatever, it doesn't matter what chapter it is of the law, so that's not even relevant. The relevant part is, every matter concerning the petitioner's real and personal property would be, would come to complete stop. Now, I don't wanna get all lawyer-like here, because that's not fair, but what I do want you to consider when you're researching this, because I really hope we table this and we refer it to Legal after we hear from the public, what I really want you to consider is the impact of bankruptcy laws upon zoning ordinances, whether or not there's an opinion on point relative to this, because I think that would be, because that would potentially counter the pre-existing prior use stuff that, relative to the two years, and so that was the only point I had to say, other than to thank you to Tessa for raising that really important point, thank you.
May I, I'm sorry, one more, one more piece of information, my client just told me...
Attorney Wilson?
I'm sorry, my client just told me he tried to get license, permit, tried to get licenses, but he was told, because of the zoning, he could not get licenses. So, he did try.
Okay, see, Mr. Gurnand?
Okay, thank you, so...
Counselor Vagan, if I could just have one, half a minute, please. I think we all wanna hear from the neighborhood, there is no argument, it's a residential neighborhood, and that's what zone hearings, you know, are, should be about, is the good, the bad, and the ugly of what this proposal is. I don't wanna talk about spot zone, because if the Law Department tells us this is a spot zone, we might as well close the city down, because the entire city is a spot zone, and we all know that. But, the reason I asked the questions about DR, and Counselor Bartley picked up on it, is a little deeper, and I think, what I wanna hear from the neighbors are, is, this is not a residential building, and it is unlikely it will become a residential building. Therefore, if something doesn't exist in it that takes care of that property, we're gonna have a blighted eyesore very soon on that piece of property. So, it's a dilemma of the city being so old, my family walked down from Elmwood down to Dingle into this neighborhood to go to work, there were businesses everywhere. There's one machine company now, there used to be two, there's a turnhole that is vacant, and I think it caved in, but, there's a number of things that we've seen and we deal with over the years because of the age of these neighborhoods. Residential should come first, we need to do the right thing for our residential neighborhood, but sometimes the right thing is protecting property, so that it doesn't become a blight in the middle of a nice residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Counselor, I think if the committees would bear with me, I'd like to hear from the public.
I just have one more, I have one more member of the planning board who has one more question, if you don't mind? And then we should go, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Gurnand?
Sure.
Mr. Daniel, you own this building since two thousand nine, right?
Correct.
You still, since two thousand nine till twenty-two, so it's twelve to thirteen years, and you do the light repair?
I'm sorry.
You do light repair over there?
Light repair, correct.
So, you're telling me you were operating without a license since two thousand nine, doing the light repair?
Correct.
So, what, my question is, DeBartley, this is my opinion, if he bought the property from, through the court, does court allow him to do the light repair without the license? That's my question, thank you very much.
Thank you.
He wasn't allowed the permits.
I understand that, I own a business, if I don't have a license, I cannot operate, so that's my concern is. So, like, if he putting some worker over there to do the repair, he putting their life in jeopardy, and himself, thank you.
Thank you, so, if everybody is ready, I would like to move to the public part, where we hear from the residents. So, if folks in the room...
Counselor Vagan and Leflame wanted to speak.
Oh, Attorney Bissonette?
No, Dan Leflame, the petitioner.
Oh, oh, the petitioner, okay, sure, Dan?
Hi, I just wanted to address the committee members, is it on? So, I did, when I first bought the building, I'll make it quick, I applied for the building permit, and I was, I told the building inspector, you know, what we were gonna do there, and he did allow, I'm sorry, he did allow the permit, he signed off on a permit, the, what was going on this here? I do have a workman's comp, everything is legitimate, insurance, everything is covered, like, hundred percent. I don't cut corners, except, you know, I did try to get the permit, I went off of the building inspector's, you know, permit, that's why I started rebuilding this building, I would've never did that if he didn't sign off on the permit, that just started this kind of pyramid issue that we have here, but I did try to go the proper route, and everything is, hundred percent insured properly, I have workman's comp, everything is, I don't put anyone's life in jeopardy, just, I wanted to make it clear, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, if we could hear from the public, and Jose, if you could recognize the folks for me, so that we can get their comments into the record, I'd appreciate it, that are in the room, thank you.
My name's William Kane, I live at twelve Papinow, right down the street from Temple. When, I've been there for over thirty years, and I saw the state of disrepair that the place was in before he bought it, and he's invested a significant amount of money, and if you pull the picture up, you can look at it, he maintains it meticulously. Not only did he buy the business, he bought the house next door, he rehabbed it, he keeps it. For security reasons, he has somebody in there to overwatch the business. I'd just hate to push him out of the neighborhood, like Mr. McGovern said, and have it fall into a state of disrepair or vacant, and then have it just another, just another empty garage, who knows what would happen if, if it was overlooked, somebody could get in there and have a business with no license, and have a chop shop, or, you know, it could be, could go in a manner in other different directions, but he's been good, he does the snowmobile, he maintains the vacant lot next door, he keeps it up, and if you look at the picture of the building, you can tell, because he's been there for, what, nine years, thirteen years? Thirteen years, and it still looks like the day he rehabbed it, so it's one of the best auto repair shops in the city, you drive around and see a lot of nasty-looking ones, he keeps his up, looking pretty good.
Thank you.
John the Fortune, twelve Papinow, pardon me? John the Fortune, twelve Papinow.
Thank you, John.
Basically, what my brother-in-law says, because I live on the second floor, and he takes care of the snow, and there's no pollution, you don't even know he's there, to be honest with you, if you didn't know the building was there, you wouldn't even know that there was a business there, it's quiet, not loud. That's all, basically, I have to say.
Hi, my name's Nathan Chung, I live at Nine Prue Avenue, Apartment four A in Holyoke. It's part of the Springdale Commons condominium, which directly abuts the applicant's property, forty-one Temple Street. So, Prue Avenue and Temple Street form like a corner, they're perpendicular to each other, so I'm pretty much adjacent, and literally, my unit overlooks the applicant's building. And I really appreciate what the applicant has done to rehabilitate the derelict building, but I still am opposed to this application to change the zoning designation from DR to BH. I wrote a letter previously for this meeting, and I'm just gonna summarize it, it has five main points, and I'll just try to summarize it. So, one of my first and main concern is, there is the future potential risk of changing the zoning designation BH, which brings with it a lot of currently not allowed uses that will be allowed by right. Some of the examples of, a lot of uses in BH, that's not currently allowed in DR, for example, some of the examples include funeral homes, hotel motels, dog kennels, self-storage, and distribution warehouse. So, it's a pretty quiet residential neighborhood right now, that mostly has residential buildings, and, you know, if the zoning designation changes, there is that future potential risk of the property being changed into another use that would affect the health, emotional health, aesthetics, physical health, and comfort of the residents in the area. Second point, the neighborhood, specifically where I live, you know, if you look at the zoning map, once this property becomes a DR, DR district, I'm sorry, BH district, our condo unit and other residents are gonna be basically squeezed between two BH districts. And if you look at the BH district that's right next to us, there are a lot of abandoned buildings, you know, collapsed businesses, like, you know, there are three empty buildings that's in disrepair, including self-storage and a former auto shop, and there is a used car business that's not really properly maintained, so this owner, he just splays, he just spreads out used cars all over the lot, and it looks very unkempt. So, the BH district that's right next to us has some negative emotional impact for us living there, because I do take walks in my neighborhood, and it's not the most nicest-looking neighborhood, especially on Main Street where the BH district is located, so that is another one of my fears, that while the applicant has done a great job, you know, maintaining his business, there is always the risk of him handing it off to another person, and then, in my point of disrepair, like what has happened with other BH district businesses in the area. And, you know, well, I think this is a kind of a spot zoning, but I won't go into that, but one thing I wanna mention is, other BH districts are located in a busy main road, like, the nearest BH district is located in Main Street, and these are one parcel deep along both sides of Main Street. This Temple Street property is in the middle of a residential district that's far away, that's away from Main Street, so it's not next to a busy street like the BH districts were originally intended to be. And the fourth point, you know, so, unfortunately, even though the applicant tries hard to keep a good business, the business operation does seem to have some negative effect on the infrastructure of the neighborhood. maintenance costs for the city because it is a it is a public road. And lastly, I'm going to end this side for going so long. So the ordinance section, the Holyoke zoning ordinance section 8.8 actually gives DR district a really interesting and advantageous feature. If you have a three-story building, then two of the two, if you have a three-story building and you have two residents in the building, the first floor can be a commercial for commercial use. That's allowed within DR district. So you have a really interesting and potentially powerful and beneficial mixed-use building that's right here. So I can, I want to argue that it may be actually in the applicant's interest to keep the DR DR designation and find other creative uses for his building that's that's conforming. And so I'm going to end it on that note and I hope we can all find a happy solution, happy and satisfactory solution for everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan. Anyone else?
Well, I didn't come that prepared. My name is Douglas Petroff, I live at Seven Prue Avenue, Apartment 5. Before before Dan came came here, that place, the trucking, I always forget the name of it. But they used to have parties there and the roof was caving in and then next thing you know, they went bankrupt, thank God. And inside there was tons of barrels of oil and all kinds of stuff that Dan came in and cleaned up because he won the thing at an auction. And at the auction, he assumed that, you know, that the license would go along with it. So he came to the city hall and asked for a license after they approved, after they approved the reconstruction and of the building. And they said, no. And I thought that, you know, Holyoke wants to see successful people and Dan is a very successful person. And the most people he hires in his place is his family, right? And my apartment building, which is Springdale condominiums, he comes in there and he helps us trim down trees. He he comes in there with his bobcat and shoveled your spot out. And, you know, and the street, I've been living there for over 14 years, they've never done anything on that street for 14 years and plows come around the corner and dig up that, they fly around that corner and dig that corner right out. So it's the city plows that are doing the damage to the street. And if you want to talk about other trucks that come there, there's a person on the end of, what's the name of that, Prue Avenue on the first, on the first building on the left, right? He has great big flatbed trucks coming in there, moving cars into his yard and taking care of stuff in his property. And then the property up above him does the same thing. But everyone is saying something about Dan, who is who who came in and refurbished the place and made it look brand new and up the value of our property, by the way, right? And cleaned out people's, the woman down the street from him, she's handicapped and he always cleans out her spot in the wintertime. City doesn't do that. City doesn't do that and a concerned neighbor is the one who does that and Dan is one of the best neighbors we've ever had. Thank you, my name is Doug Petroff.
Anyone else? I think that's it, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And is there anyone else online? I know I received, no, I think the only one is the man who came in person on this one. So at this point, no. We have two other, we have two other letters.
There were two more that were emailed.
Angela Zabawa, Nine Prue Street.
And Irma Cruz at 41 Temple.
Correct.
Okay. Does somebody want to at least know?
I could read the Angela's. Yeah, I could read Angela's about since I got it in my hand. Zabawa, I don't know. So Angela Angela Zabawa, Nine Prue Street stated in a phone call that she owns one of the condos in a budding building to 41 Temple Street. She stated that there had been another business at the location previously that had closed, the location was vacant for unspecified length of time and then Mr. LeFlamie purchased it and began operating his business. She didn't say how long ago that was, she said that there was constant loud, unruly noise coming from the business into very late hours of the night. She noted one instance where she heard loud banging at night and went outside to see what it was because she thought it was a car accident and that a couple of other of the other condo owners had also gone outside for the same reason. She also said that the business has had a large truck parked on the street causing deep pivots in the road.
Mr. Kelly, you have the Irma Cruz letter in your packet unless you want me to read it.
Yeah, I do and there's also, I see a communication from Angela Zabawa.
That's the one I just read.
You just, okay, we're all set, okay. We have a letter from from Irma Cruz, 35 Temple Street in Holyoke, addressed to the ordinance committee. This letter is in favor of the zone change for 41 Temple Street, Holyoke, Massachusetts, for Daniel Laflamme from DR to BH. I truly ask your vote in favor of this zone change. I live three houses down from this business for seven years and have never had an issue with them. They are very reasonable people and has our street very clean in the winter. They help the neighbors with snow removal every year with their own equipment. Please vote to approve this zone change. Sincerely, Irma Cruz.
Thank you. So that sounds like it brings our public comment portion to a close and so if with the committee.
Bacon, I'm sorry, I did just get an email from one other person saying she wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
So that is, oh, she's just left. She sent me an email with her comments and then, okay, there she is, Kat Newman wanted to speak.
Okay, so I'll recognize Kat Newman for public comment.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. My apologies about that. So I'm Catherine Newman, I live at 33 Temple, so I live next door to Irma Cruz, so I'm four houses down. I bought my house in 2019 in the neighborhood and when I first was sort of looking at the neighborhood and, you know, I was a single woman living in the area, I was kind of checking out and I think one of the things that's really nice about Temple Street is that all of the neighbors sort of know one another, they're very friendly with one another, they look out for one another. And so my first introduction to the company, the trucking company was, oh, there's, you know, there's a business down at the end, they're very helpful, to echo what other folks have said about the snow removal. And they said, yeah, and, you know, they they wanted to keep an eye on it and, you know, they kind of said they didn't want to disturb the neighborhood too much, so they might as well become a resident. And so they had let us know that the uncle had lived next door, which people had spoken to. I actually, so in my line of work, I worked for both the university and I've worked also for municipalities and I've done a lot in terms of sort of quality of life improvement and concerns with neighborhoods. And initially, when I moved into the neighborhood, I was like, oh, this is a little bit funky, but actually the way that Daniel maintains kind of the rapport with the neighborhood and works with folks is really nice and it actually makes me feel much safer in the neighborhood. He's very respectful about noise, he doesn't operate on the weekends, really past usually six o'clock, we don't hear much. He also makes a point of, you know, kind of shuffling the trucks and things like that if it's if it's a concern. He's, I've brought cookies to them before because the first year that I lived there, we had a major snowstorm and plow, you know, shoveled everything out by hand, it was first time homeowner, didn't know where it could really put the snow, we're all pretty much right on top of one another. And the city plows had come through twice and like basically dumped the snow back in and he came and sort of with his small plow kind of helped clear it out. And it's just sort of nice that there's always activity down that street in a way that isn't impeding to sort of the the quality and well-being of the neighborhood, but in a way that there's activity so that it doesn't sort of create loitering and things like that. So I actually feel much safer. Anybody who's ever driving his trucks, they wave at me and my dog anytime we're crossing the street. I am at, you know, the Springdale Park multiple times a day with my service dog and we stand and wait to cross that street and usually about 15 cars go by and the trucking company has always let us cross, you know, so I think he's just a very courteous, you know, resident and involvement in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to echo what other folks have said and it's similar to Irma's letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I think we have heard from everyone, Jeffrey, unless somebody else is in the queue?
There are no other hands raised and I don't know of any other letters.
Okay, thank you. So then just to summarize, it seems that between now and the next time we meet, we need to have our legal team weigh in on at least two main questions. One is, was the non-conforming pre-existing use lost during the bankruptcy or was it maintained? I think that is the first question that has to be answered so that we know if a zone change is needed. And secondly, we need to understand, given the zoning down there, if it would be a spot zone. And then how, given that we just created an IG zone in DR, if in any way that would relate to any consideration, should we be looking to continue to consider a zone change, either to another zone or something within DR?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Have I captured everything? Counselor Rivera?
I would like to add just one last piece, right? If even after today, are they still going to be continuing to operate illegally in the business over there? Oh, it's not illegal? Or is it legal for them to have the business without? Because that's a question too for legal.
That that isn't, that isn't for us to answer tonight.
But, okay. I just don't understand because if 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 someone is trying to run, if you need a serve safe to run a restaurant and you don't have a serve safe, you can't run the restaurant anymore. So until things are fixed, I'm trying to understand how it works, what are the steps?
I think the next steps from an administrative perspective lie in the city departments.
Okay.
Who on the one hand issued permits and on the other hand didn't issue a license. I I think that's in their purview under the mayor.
Counselor Jordan has their hands up and Rosanna too.
May I go, Madam Chair?
They're planning, right? So.
Oh, no, Kevin Jordan here, city council.
Oh, I see, I see you, Kevin. I I heard somebody say hands were up for planning, so I was just waiting for.
There is too, but I think Counselor Jordan can go, then Rosanna will go after him.
Okay, great. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. Just want to thank all the residents for coming out and speaking both favor and against and thank the applicant for applying. I just wanted to make a couple of points. Number one is a very good discussion, always a good one to have when we're talking about procedure. Just a couple of things I'd like to just point out in terms of the analysis of this. One is, the person continues to operate until they go in and the city seeks some sort of court order to get him to stop, right? That that is presumed legal until they can prove otherwise. So in terms of, is he operating tomorrow legally or illegally? Think, I don't see there's any pressing issue here considering that he's been doing this since 2009, pretty much daily since that time. The other thing is, in terms of it being spot zoning, I won't go as far as Counselor McGivern says that there is no potential for spot zoning in Holyoke, but you do certainly have to question its application here. One, you have IG zone right on that street, so you already have other business uses just on Temple Street alone. You don't need to go much further than that. DR is a relatively new zone, it's only been around about 20 years. Unlikely that the person or the prior owner was even consented to having that, it was likely changed without their consent to to have it. There's also a number of defenses to spot zoning. There's a number of cases, one of the bigger cases that came in Massachusetts, it's called the Franzen case, relative to spot zoning. Some of the things that all you really need to prove, and again, by the way, this wouldn't be us, the city, we we can change a zone. It would be for some hypothetical plaintiff that would have to sue the city if we changed the zone. So it's really more of a defense to a spot zoning claim. I don't even know if there even would be a hypothetical plaintiff, but let's presume that there was. The city would simply have to show that there was a practical basis for the rezoning, that there were legitimate public goals achieved by doing the spot zone, quote unquote. And to do that, I mean, I think you go here to what's the simple analysis of what you have here. More or less, this has been an ongoing use for about 70 years. Whether you get into the semantics of the tolling of the use by the bankruptcy court or not, for better or for worse, why or why not, it has basically been used for this purpose for the past 70 years. So the question is, as you're thinking about, you know, how we need to come down on this, the question is, you know, what's the greater harm? And would it be unreasonable to have this use continue when it's been the prevalent use, if not the dominant or exclusive use of this parcel for the last 70 years? Seems like a reasonable conclusion to make. I'm looking to make sure that the neighbors are protected in the event that we were to allow this and this is basically quote unquote housekeeping to allow something that's been used in this manner for this many years. I think it's important point, it was raised earlier, relative to, even if we allowed this zone, this use requires a special permit. Special permits allow the city council to put on a number of conditions, a number of conditions that hopefully will alleviate the concerns if this is to be approved of people who might have legitimate concerns, making sure that things don't occur at various hours or with various uses. We have pretty wide discretion from the courts to put on quite a number of conditions on these type of permits. That would be step two in this if this is even allowed. So the notion that, well, this would just open up Pandora's Box, that's not necessarily the case. People need to consider the special permit process and the conditions that we could put on. Conditions, by the way, and special permits that aren't necessarily transferable onto the next person. And so there's that risk to the next owner if there was this move to to make that kind of a transfer. So there is potential here to to, you know, protect the neighbors and to allow a good neighbor and to allow this use to continue. So I think we need to balance all these harms, one way or the other, and and consider this and also have to weigh, you know, Mr. Laflamme's particular situation and and what is what is justice call here for? And so I think we need to get more information and additional guidance from the law department so that, you know, you have a business owner here that by all appearances is trying to do the right thing, is trying to be legitimate, is trying to be transparent, probably from its inception, and now, you know, is coming forward with this to remedy the situation. And the question is, do we want to accept the remedy? So hopefully the answer will come to us pretty soon and we'll listen to anybody else that wants to hear us to. so that, you know, you have a business owner here that by all appearances is trying to do the right thing, is trying to be legitimate, is trying to be transparent, probably from its inception, and now, you know, is coming forward with this to remedy the situation. And the question is, do we want to accept the remedy? So hopefully the answer will come to us pretty soon. And we'll listen to anybody else that wants to hear us to, to see that we're considering all the facts, pro and con on this, so that we have the best information to, to, to help the neighbors and to help this individual property owner. So, good discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one Planning Board member, Rosanna. Do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge the applicant that this is not a personal thing when we make our decisions as far as me in the Planning Board, I'm representing the community. This has to do with more what's in the best interest for the city and the community, right? Because the way your neighbor spoke about you, like, I want to be your neighbor, right? Because you help out with the snow, it sounds like you keep up with the neighborhood, and that's a plus. But in reality, there's a process, right? And so I don't want you to think that, you know, this, it's a personal thing. Because I feel like everybody's talking about your character. And at the end of the day, this is not about your character, it's about the zoning. And so that's what we need to keep in mind, and how will that affect? And will it have a ripple effect? And I think, well, Counselor Jordan made a very good point that, you know, with the special permits, you know, we can put special language in there where this could be possible. So I don't want you to give up hope, but I also want you to know this isn't about your character, this is about the zoning in the city and the people that live in it.
Thank you. So to the committee, are we in agreement with what we are requesting of legal until the next time we meet?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Givner?
Can we add to that? I would just like to know if the zoning was changed, if in a special permit we could put stipulations on that? Because my understanding of changing the zoning is that the zoning change is permanent. So that's my concern.
Okay. Yes, so adding to the two questions that I outlined, this question related to if the zone was changed, what would the impact be? And Counselor Givner, if you want to add specifically to that, can you say again what specifically you want them to answer for you?
Specifically, I'd like to know if a, a change to BH zoning is a permanent change? Because my understanding is that it would be permanent and therefore the owner of the property could sell their business with that BH zoning, which is fine for this gentleman's business and his neighborhood, but may not be for a car dealership or hotel that tries to move into that location. Thank you.
Okay. So to our legal folks, are you clear on our three questions for the next meeting? Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, great. So back to the committee and the Planning Board. I'm looking to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to May 24th, if that would give Attorney Dagman enough time? Is that enough time? Or is that too quick? Do you want to go to June?
I would prefer, yes, given what I'm working on now. If that's possible, I'd prefer that.
So to Planning and the committee, is the second, is the fourth Tuesday in June workable?
June 28th works for me. June 28th. Here in chambers, yes.
Alan, does that work for Planning?
Sharon, do you have the-
Yeah, there's nothing on our calendar for June 28th, which is what you're suggesting the date is.
Yes, that would be June 28th.
We have nothing on our calendar as of right now.
Okay.
Okay, so to my committee, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to June 28th at 6:30?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, ask the Planning Board members for a motion? So moved.
I'll move that we continue to June 28th.
Okay, the, the motion would be to continue the public hearing to January 28th, 2022.
June, June 28th.
I mean, I'm sorry. June 28th, 2022, at 6:30 PM.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Could you call the roll, please?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Grenander?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, John, we'll go to your number two if you want.
Madam Chair, can we actually take up item three? I know there's a couple of people here to speak up item three, so like to entertain a motion to take up item three and open up the public hearing. Second.
Okay. And Mr. Kelly, does, is that in concert with your agenda there too?
Just ask, just let me know what is your number three topic?
Our number three is the daycare.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay? Okay, so I'm guessing that might be your number two. So all in favor?
Aye.
So our public hearing is open and the order is that the Hoi Ok zoning ordinances be amended to no longer allow daycare services in R1 or R2 district by right, but by City Council's special permit. So our public hearing's open.
Okay, entertain a motion to open the public hearing, the Planning Board, actually to reopen the public hearing, the Planning Board, to discuss a zone text change to amend Section 43, Table of Principal Uses, Principal Use A for Family Daycare Home, to allow daycare services by special permit of the City Council introduced by Counselor Bartley.
So moved.
Second on the motion?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, Sharon?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Grenander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
If the committee and the Planning Board is willing, because we have heard this, discussed it at least once before, I would like to let the public speak first and then ask the committee members and the Planning Board members to weigh in if that's agreeable to everyone.
Counselor Bartley has his hands up.
Well, Madam Chair?
Counselor Bartley, yes?
Yeah, if I may, because I, I just have a, a family matter and I just want to-
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to, I just want to lay out the framework as to what I did here and why I did it. And send, then, then I, and I've already spoken to several, several of the members here, the public, and I've asked them to certainly reach out to me directly, but I'll watch the tape, okay? So I just, but I haven't had a chance to speak on this and, and-
Okay.
Sorry, I missed a prior meeting. I, that was my ignorance, so my, my apologies for that. I, I didn't realize. Okay, so I'll, I'll be, I'll just, I'll be, this is going to be my brief, my, my Cliff Notes here, so if, if I may. So this will be pretty, pretty quick. So thank you to the chair and to the committee, both committees, for, for letting me speak. First off, I'm going to issue two apologies because, one is, one is, first off, I, I, I thought mine was going to be the semi-controversial. I didn't know that one was going to be a doozy like that, so I had no idea it was going to go so long. Second off, when I filed this order, there, there's no intent on my part at all to hurt or offend anyone. So I just want to make that really clear because I'm getting some feedback as if, as if that's, that's the case, and that is not the case. Number two is, the purpose of this order, Madam Chair, was to start a conversation. And I, I think we're, we're going to have that, it sounds like you already started it without me being there, and I do apologize again. Third, Madam Chair, is, I, I'd always been under the impression that all this activity, whether daycare, services, were, because that's what I was told by my predecessors and, and current counselors, that all this was allowed by right. Well, it turns out that part of it's allowed by right, but part of it is not allowed by right, and that's through mass general law. So, so there's some flexibility that can be had at the local level. Again, can, doesn't mean we have to, can be had. Fourth, Madam Chair, the reason I filed this is to be prospective. So in other words, not to look behind us as to existing providers. I have no interest in regulating with a change any existing provider. So I hope I made that, that point semi-clear. Number five, why did I file this? Well, it has to do with one of the most basic tenets that, that I feel is so important as a counselor and as a property owner, which is to say, property rights. In a residential district, when, when I bought my homes, I, I expected to have residential use. I expected my neighbors have residential uses. But what mass law says is that certain uses, and even the R1 zone, such as daycare, can just come in and change what was a single-family home into a commercial business. Let me go to my sixth point and really what's prompted this, which is a business that was started with a daycare on Argyle Avenue. Now, if any of you are familiar with Argyle Avenue, that's great. But if you're not, it sits between basically Hillside Avenue and North Hampton Street. It is a very thick, windy street with single-family homes. To my knowledge, it's all zoned R1, but I'll, I'll stand corrected if it's R2, because a lot, a lot, most of Elmwood is R2. I haven't looked up the zoning. But basically, all the homes there are used as single-family. So I'll happily stand corrected if some are R2. But if you look at Merrick Avenue and Argyle Ave and, and that particular, and all that particular area, it's basically single-family homes. What happened at this property at Argyle Avenue? What was a single-family home was converted seemingly, no, this is before I was, I was on the board. It was converted to a daycare business, which as we know is generally an innocuous type of, of affair, right? I mean, what goes on those four walls is just, you know, taking care of children. But when neighbors called Bartley up, and this is in 2013, 2014, we had a few meetings literally on Argyle Avenue with the neighbors, Bartley. We're okay with actually, you know, taking care of children, that's not the issue. When cars fly in in the morning, when they're late for work, get out, take the kid, when they come in in the afternoon, fly in. When they, when they, so they're speeding, they're queuing up, they're driving on the lawns. That is what prompted my thought and what caused me to ask the question finally as to whether or not daycares can be regulated at the local level. What do I envision for, for, for regulation? I don't envision stopping daycare, quite the opposite. Quite the opposite. I want to support daycare, I want to support commercial businesses. I hope that's clear to anyone who, who's listening to me that maybe had a chant, maybe spoke out beforehand. I want to be clear, I want to support businesses. That has probably been one of my number one things since I came on this board in 2012. I want to support business. I envision it, just like, I mean, we heard Tessa say earlier, and I encourage all of you to, 9.3.2 in our zoning, it's about two sentences. So it's not like you have to be, you know, just have to be two sentences. It allows this City Council to impose reasonably related conditions. What, what could they possibly be? Well, hours of operation, parking, noise level, lighting, that's it. It's not to deny a business. And what, how do we get to, how do we get to a special permit? We do it through a public hearing, just as we had tonight, where we have pro and con neighbors, a butters, and we heard a perfect example tonight, this is out of a Norman Rockwell, where, where we had several support, but we had few raised, raised concerns. And I, I took, as many of you did, I took a lot of notes on both sides. But ultimately, what, what I, what I want to see from this is a chance for people that own property expecting to have residential use in their vicinity, when that's going to be a change, so potential, a, a potential change, that they have an opportunity to be heard and to offer some conditions that are reasonably related. I, I'm going to end there, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate, first of all, you taking this out of order and letting me do my thing. As I said, I'm, I'm gonna, not that I'm ignoring, because I'm not, I've already said it to other people that are here, I cannot stay just due to family matters, which is why I generally leave City Council meetings at nine o'clock on regular meetings, just to have family commitments that are just undeniable. So, so thank you for that. My hope tonight is that we'll, we'll, we'll have a chance to consider it. I, I'd rather just have this table than continue, if I could, for a further discussion so I can be more present, because I do want to hear from people. So, so again, the, the main thing is for those that are here, I think there are providers here, there are existing providers. This would not, in any way, shape or form, impact or affect an existing provider. That's the way I envision it. Now, we'll take the vote when we take the vote. But existing providers would be quote-unquote grandfathered. This would be for future, so when a homeowner sees a, a change into, to his or her neighbor, the homeowner gets to weigh in on it. Hey, this, this is, this is what I would like to see, and would you consider adding this as a condition on a permit? All right, I've said enough. Thanks for everybody's time, appreciate it. But I, I will hear this, I will watch the tape later on, so I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Bartley.
All right, thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Okay. So moving to public comment, Jose, if I could ask you to coordinate that in the room? Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak up for, for, against this order? Okay, we have someone coming up now, Chair Reagan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Eileen Leahy. I'm here with Marie Zerheid, who's been a daycare provider in the city of Hoi Ok for over 30 years. She called me today for a number of reasons, just speaking her behalf.
I'm sorry, can we have a name and address for the record, please?
Sure, I'll repeat it. I said Eileen Leahy, 12 Park Slope, Hoi Ok, Mass, lifelong resident of Hoi Ok. I'm here in behalf of Marie Zerheid, 29 Greenwillow Drive, 23, sorry, Greenwillow Drive in Hoi Ok. Daycare provider for over 30-plus years, probably raised, I say raised, probably over 200 kids went through her daycare. My three children have gone through her daycare. And she called me today when she learned of this ordinance, this potential new special permit, and was just really upset by the whole thing. And I guess what concerns me the most is, I'm pleased to hear that Counselor Bartley said that these people will be grandfathered in, current daycare providers, because that's only fair. But I also heard that he wants to put regulations, and I'm just trying to figure out, how are you going to regulate children going outside and having fun and laughing? Are we going to regulate schools? How are you going to regulate, you know, like toys? I heard in the last public hearing I was listening to before I came tonight, talking about like people seeing toys in a yard. Are we going to regulate everybody who has kids, the amount of toys you're allowed in your yard? I had three kids, you would have thought it was a daycare when my kids were little. I'll tell you right now, they would take every toy out of the garage and leave it there because they wouldn't know how to put things away, and then I'd be out at night throwing everything back in the garage. And it just seems like it's an empty special permit, because how's the city going to regulate this? Do you regulate other special permits you give out? Are you going to show up and regulate these things? I don't think so. But I know that the daycare, our home daycare is, is regulated by the state. People can show up at their daycare at any time. Food, the food providers can show up at any time. There are probably 15 or 20 at least policies and procedures they have to follow. They have to be licensed, and they have to have the licensing authority, has to come in and go through their house to make sure it's appropriate. You know, if someone's buying a house and they see there's a home daycare next door, well, maybe they should think twice if they don't like kids. I don't know, I mean, I just don't get it. I just, I don't understand why we're trying to regulate something that's already overly regulated in the city of Hoi Ok. These are hardworking people who are doing a service for others. I can tell you, during the pandemic, when everybody else was closed down, everybody else was getting to stay home, Marie and other daycare providers in the city of Hoi Ok opened their doors and took care of first responders' children and allowed that COVID to come into their home, not knowing, we didn't know what it was at that point. And they allowed their homes, these people to come into their home and care for these children so our first responders could go to work. And now we want to turn around and put a special permit on people and start regulating this and put more bureaucracy into this? It just doesn't make any sense to me. We need to use a little more common sense in this city. You know, these people are hardworking. And then I heard another comment was made during the public hearing, something about why aren't they going and getting- something about, why aren't they going and getting a storefront, you know, and making a commercial business? I wish it was that easy. Do you know how expensive it is to start a business? I'm a former business owner. Do you know how many taxes what the city puts on you? You just, you can't do it. I mean, Marie started her daycare business because she had young children, and she couldn't afford to work and to pay for daycare. And this is going back, her oldest is like 35, 40 or something, so this is going back a long time. I had to work, and when I had my first child, I had three children, my husband and I both worked full-time. I dropped him off at 12 weeks old, cried my eyes off, and went to my full-time job. I could not have afforded to put my children in a center daycare. I chose Marie's daycare, she's become a part of my family, it's like dropping her off to my, I won't say mother, because she's not that much older than me, but it's like dropping her off to a family member. I never worried about where my children were, the care they were getting. You don't get that in a center, but you get it in a home daycare, and that's the beauty of a home daycare. So I hope that the planning board and the city council does not decide that a special permit is necessary. These people, they're regulated, they're hard-working people, they're doing what they need to do, and they don't need to jump through another hoop, hoping that their neighbors who might buy a house, you know, likes kids. I mean, what happens if they have a neighbor who moves in and all of a sudden decides they want to, you know, go against a special permit? Then they could, their business could be shut down because a couple neighbors are complaining? That's not right. You know, and hope that the council and everybody does the right thing, but we know how things happen. The right thing's not always done, we hope it is, but it's not always. So just, please, let's use some common sense here, and just see this order, just know they are regulated. Go to the EEC, go to the Commonwealth of Mass., Google daycare regulations, you'll see how they are regulated. They're regulated for everything. They keep our children safe, and we're lucky that we have the daycare providers we do have in the city of Hoyok. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Eileen. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Felicita Lopez, 189 Pine Street. I'm a daycare educator. I'm not a babysitter. I provide a service to the children of the community and surrounding communities, and I provide a service to the families. You said everything there perfectly. We may be grandfathered in, but I'm thinking about those parents that called me three times a week probably, because they're looking for childcare, and I'm at capacity right now. I cannot take any more children. And I hear their voices, because there's a need for parents to study. We want parents to go out there and work, so we have to give them the services so that their children can be safe. When my kids, I call them my kids, when my kids, they call me grandma, by the way, when my kids come into my program, they feel safe. When a parent drops off their child the very first time, they're with tears in their eyes, and the kid's holding on tightly to them, and I tell them, "I promise you, in one week, your child will not be crying, and your child's not going to want to go home with you." And one week, that parent comes and tells me, "You know what? You were right, because they're calling their child, and their child's turning right around, and they want to go continue to play with their friends." As per EEC, yes, we are regulated. Regulated, regulated, regulated. We have to have physicals, we have to have professional development days, we have to do continuing education, we have to have Cory's fingerprinted. We also have the food programs where they come in and visit. Then we have the therapists that come in to work with our kids, because we do work with kids who are autistic, they might have development issues, and we have them to come in to work with them. We are the, what daycare center may be, but more in a homey way. We make sure that they have their foods. I know that when my kids come into my program, those are going to be the happiest hours of that child's day. And I know that these kids are going to learn, and they're going to be prepared for tomorrow. I know that I'm providing a service, that that parent can be confident that I'm taking care of their child. And we're not only taking care of the working parents' children, but we work in conjunction with DCF. When you have the foster children, they're dropping them off at our homes. When the parents that are in need of services, we're also taking care of those kids also. So, there is a need for daycare providers. I have a waitlist until September already, and I feel bad, because I'm turning families around, and what I do is, I'm like, well, listen, contact VOC. Contact this person, check and see if they have spaces available, because there is a need for childcare providers. So with that need, now having this, this is a hurdle that we're going to have. It took me almost five months for me to get my license. Through that time, I had to get trainings, again, quarried, my family had to be quarried. My house became open door, having people come in and to check and make sure that every child is going to be safe. I have the fire department that comes in, that tests my smoke detectors, and I make sure that I have the city business license, just in case I'm told that I'm not in compliance. I do have a city business license, I have an EEC license, I have VOC license, and I have a state license. So, we are doing what we're supposed to do, and one of my other hats is I'm a coach for Strong Start EEC and UMass Boston. So what I do is, when we have new providers that are coming our way, this is something that I'm making sure that our new providers know that they have to be in compliance with all of these. We cannot, we cannot enforce somebody to drive properly down the street. This is a city, people are always going to drive crazy. I have a daycare, I have a little man with a little flag standing to drive slowly. People drive crazy, and we can't stop them. That's, you know, unfortunately. My suggestion, a neighbor has a problem with people driving crazy down the street, call the police, take a license number, call EEC and say, hey, your provider has people that are coming in and out at different hours, they're driving crazy down the street, can you please take care of that issue? But to create a situation for somebody that's willing to start, and I know Counselor Bartley said that he's not hitting a certain population, well, I'm going to talk about that, that's hitting women-owned businesses, because most of the daycare providers are women, and minority-owned businesses. It's, you know, it's a factor that we have to take into that, because we are investing in the children, we're invested in the families of the community, and we're not babysitters. I want to make sure that everybody understands that we're educators. We sit down and we do circle time, and we do reading stories, and yes, the toys are out there, because, you know what, children learn when they're having fun, and that's the best way to teach a child through play. So that is why those toys are out there. Because we're, each toy's out there, we're having them count the toys, talk about the colors of the toys, how the wheels on the toys go round and round. So that is the point, children learn through play. Unfortunately, we have a few individuals that don't want to obey the speeding laws, but we cannot be jeopardized for something that others should be responsible for. And that would be creating another hurdle for future daycare providers, which really, really need in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicita.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jose Romero, my wife Janet Romero. My wife's also an educator for the children. The one thing I wanted to touch on was the traffic thing that Counselor Bartley said. We cannot control vehicles, what the parents do when they're dropping off their children. As it stands right now, you can go over on Franklin Street and stand in a corner after hours, and you'll see cars flying through the stop signs. The only way to control that is to put a cop in every corner. That's number one. Number two, once they see cops, they stop. Or they'll get ticketed, arrested, whatever the case is. Putting regulations on the daycares right now with the permit thing, or whatever it is that he wants to get out of this, my opinion is, everything is working now. There's no need to fix it. If it ain't broke, why fix it, right? It's my motto. So, you know, I hope you guys take into consideration that the educators do a hell of a service for the city of Hoyok. And, you know, I'm a first responder for the city of Hoyok, and I couldn't do my wife's job. There's no way. I'll go into burning buildings first, you know, bottom line. But, you know, I'm also her assistant, and whenever she needs me, I'm there, no matter what, you know? So I hope you guys take all this into consideration. Oh, yes. Also, they are certified for ATPR too, so, you know, and they have CDAs. There's a lot of things that she wants me to say, but, I don't know, dinner time. You guys have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening, everyone. My name's Steve Huntley, I'm Executive Director of Valley Opportunity Council, 35 Mount Carmel Ave., Chicopee. So, what everybody said is exactly what I agree with and support. The thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is the role VOC has with 17 home educators in the city of Hoyok. It's not every one, we're what EEC calls a system. So as a system, we're another set of eyes that intrudes on their homes to make sure they're doing it, but we're also another set of hands to help them when they have problematic situations with kids, behaviors, needs, et cetera. So, we have a contract with our home educators, they're subcontractors of ours. We're a matchmaker, so we meet with the family, we talk to the family, we figure out what their needs are, and then we try and align them with home educators. So, there's some cultural competency that has to happen to make sure people align. There are, the majority of the kids we serve are working families. However, there are some homeless, and you have to align the circumstances a homeless family may be going to, and put them in a home that's supportive of the circumstances, or a foster child is going through. And it's just a specialty. And some folks are great at working with those kids, some aren't. So it's a matchmaking system, so that they're successful. We all want everybody to be successful, that's really the key. Pre-COVID, we had around 120 home educators, right now, we have 99, and we're building back throughout the county. We have 17 in Hoyok. At our peak, we had, as far back as I could look, we had 36 in Hoyok at one point in time. What that says is, there's huge demand for this in the city of Hoyok. There are help-wanted signs everywhere, and if you have a baby, you're pretty close to stuck if you don't have something lined up six or eight months before, probably six months before that baby is born. They provide an amazing service, and really, it fits within the VOC mission. I've always thought that this program fits within the VOC mission several ways. Obviously, we're helping people work, obviously, we're helping the most disadvantaged children in the community have a good day. You know, you see our vans going around town, the transportation we offer is often for kids who are disadvantaged, who the support is to give them a good day, because their home life isn't the best at this moment in their history. So, we're really trying to give them a situation where they'll become successful in life, and not be defined by what they're a victim of when they're two years old, three years old. Most of our parents pay, we do a little bit of the back-office work, if you will, for the home educators. We collect the fees from the parents, and then, but we pay them directly, the full amount. So if their daily rate is whatever, we collect what the parent fee is, we pay them the full amount, we invoice EEC, they give us the differential. So we do a lot of the back-office support for them, so that they can care for their children. They have long days, they're open long days, EEC requires them to be open long days. These folks, some of these folks opened at 6:30 this morning and started seeing children, and here we are at, I don't know what time it is, 8, 9, 10? It feels probably later than it is, but they really do that. We have home visitors, they visit them at least once a month, but more often than not, it's twice, three times, and they're a phone call away. They come by, I have a situation, can you help me? I need some help. So, really, really, the bottom line that I wanted to convey, I want everybody to understand, they're not a bunch of individuals working alone. There's support networks for all of these folks to help them, and they're professionals, and they're not daycare, they're early education providers, they're preparing kids for kindergarten. They're putting them on the right track, so that in third grade, they'll pass the MCAS. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this thing on?
Yep.
Ready? Sweet. John Rivera, let's see, new address now, 125 Cabot, apartment number four. And hats off, and really, just lots of respect and kudos to all of our providers, daycare providers. These are, you know, not only, I mean, to call them essential workers is, I feel like, just not like description enough. These folks are superheroes within our communities, they deserve like, all the respect, all the, I mean, anything that we can give them as, you know, community leaders, you know, city councils, whatever it may be, we should not restrict anything for them. You know, we should make their lives easier, they make our lives easier. You know, speaking from someone who came from one of these daycares, it just doesn't make any sense to, you know, like, to echo what the first speaker said, it doesn't make any sense to further restrict. I mean, for someone who collaborates with Libertarian Republicans that really want to pull back restrictions, this person sure really loves to put restrictions, whether it's on, you know, superheroes in our community, daycare providers, right? Or it's on local businesses, and that's like, super alarming. So, I just want to make a couple points. The first one, if you do not have the capacity to, I don't know, be a city counselor, you probably should not be a city counselor.
Excuse me, you are out of order, you cannot attack an individual in public comment.
I'm aware that I attacked any individual, but okay. Number two, I urge any, you know, residents of the populace to use your voice, to go out, and make sure that you vote in the next election. I hope that that wasn't out of order as well, because this stuff-
We're talking about the, we're talking about a public hearing and the comments we are taking in are relative to the daycares.
Right, well, if, you know, if you don't want restrictions on these things, on superheroes, then I urge you to take action and attend to the next public hearing on these things. I urge you to use your voice, like I am doing so right now. And yeah, you know, mad kudos, mad respect to daycare providers. Just want to echo everybody here, and thank you for all the work that you do, because it does not get enough respect that it deserves. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers? We do have two people online, Libby and Linda, that have their hands raised.
Hi, good evening. Is it my turn, Libby Hernandez?
Sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Honorable City Council, Planning Board, and all of us. Libby Hernandez, 45 Walnut Street, Hoyok, Mass., 71040. And I am here today speaking on behalf of the order filed to change the zoning for daycare providers, and I'm going to speak against it, of course. And what I want to say is that, although I agree that I am also concerned about traffic and speeds in our streets, in our residential areas, I mean, there is a safety issue there, we can't correlate it just because there's daycare providers in the areas. And what I want to say about that is that, I know a lot of constituents and people that otherwise would have never started up their business, they were prompted and stimulated to have a daycare business, to provide services to a community. People of low means financially, that have stepped up, and this has been their first business. By providing more hurdles and more regulations, we are going to disempower them to move forward and putting these businesses together and providing these services for us, like our constituent John Rivera said, I agree with him, they are superheroes. And we need to take in account and think, who is it that's complaining about this? Let's ask. Who is it that toys and these businesses are an eyesore to? So just because a handful of people are- So just because a handful of people are complaining about this, we can't just come forward and say, oh, let's change the whole so, all the zoning. And yeah, let's grandfather the people that already have, but then let's regulate them moving forward. And then let's place more hurdles on the new people that are trying to start up their businesses and, and provide decent and affordable childcare in our town. That is not okay because they get regulated enough, the city, the, the, the state already regulates them. And we don't need extra hurdles and bureaucracy on the people that make up this beautiful town of Holyoke. We don't need that. So I'm speaking against this order and I hope that everybody else can see the transparency and that we can move forward and keep on supporting all of our educators and daycare providers. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. And who is next, Jeff?
We have Linda Pratt.
Linda Pratt, please.
Good evening, Linda Pratt, 39 St. Colby Drive in Holyoke. I previously lived on Belvedere, which is in Ward Six. And it's in one of the zones that you're considering adding additional regulations to. I would have been very happy to have a home daycare provider on my street, in my neighborhood. I really hope that you will not be adding additional restrictions to adding special permits to people who want to start up these businesses in the R1 and R2 districts. I, I think we've heard from a lot of people talking about the regulations that they currently have to operate under. I'm a grandmother now. When I was a, a mother with young children, I would love to have had a provider like many of these people we have heard speak tonight, to be able to take my children to. So just wanted to let you know that as a former resident of one of those zones, I would not have had a problem with a daycare in my, on my street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, topic- Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Keyla Chavez.
Keyla Chavez, aye.
Aye, good night. Um, I, um, I live at 206 Pine Street here in Holyoke. Um, I want to add to this that even, um, I get the zoning and I understand all that. And I feel that when the councillor was talking, he was, um, talking like, is there's, there's twenty kids in these homes and there's not. Most of these daycare are licensed for six or ten kids, no more than that. These parents are coming one time in the morning, one time in the afternoon. If there's an emergency, you know, a parent has to come. And they're not, they're not all coming, all six cars at the same time. They're coming, you know, everybody has different times to work and we are working while everybody else in the community are working. So I, then I don't see how much bother could be to my neighbor, their car stands in front of my house for three or five minutes because his parent had to get him time to work. And come back, get them, some of them go to a second shift, some of them have to go home and cook, you know. It, it's, it's not that imposing in the community that a car comes in and picks up their kid. I just want to add that because I want you to know that it's not massive amount of kids. We could only have just J amount. Just, I wanted to make sure that you guys hear this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers or online? Um, I do want to read all the seven emails that we got today into the public comment. Can I do that now?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. So the first one, uh, from Andrea Cucua, Cucuca, from 270 Ingleside Street. I got an email today from Jose Luis Madalavelas about an order that Consular Bartley has filed that would no longer allow daycare services in residential districts without a city council special permit. It is confusing to me why home daycares are being singled out in this way. I have run a home daycare for seventeen years now and have never once run into a problem having this business in my house. Daycares are needed right now more than ever. We are full, to capacity with people on waitlist, trying to find spots for their children to be cared for in a home where they can be in an environment more like their own home rather than a center. We are licensed by the state and have to do trainings to keep our license current and this just seems like an additional step that is unnecessary. Finding out the date of the city council meeting is unfair. I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I would like to be kept informed of what took place. So that was number one. There's four more. Second one is from Sherry Rodriguez, 1215 Dwight Street, Apartment Two. It is important that we do not place unnecessary barriers between working parents and a childcare. Residential daycare may be the only affordable option, the only neighborhood option that is within walking distance of home or work, or maybe simply the only option parents feel comfortable with. Whatever the reason it is preferred, it doesn't make sense to add additional levels to an already well-regulated industry. Please do not move forward with this ordinance. Message number three from Ann Thalamer, 97 Brown Ave. I'm amiable to say that I'm opposed to the zoning tax change amendment section four point three table of principal uses for a family daycare home to allow daycare services by special permit of the city council order that Consular Bartley has filed that will no longer allow daycare services in residential districts by right, but only by city council special permit. The additional hurdle of obtaining a city council special permit, which is not an easy, simple, or fast process, adds an unnecessary and burdensome extra step to an already lengthy and comprehensive process of licensure. The systems of the Department of Early Education Care have in place to ensure safety already require providers to go through excessive training, rigorous inspections, and multiple comprehensive background checks, including SORI, Corey, DCF, and fingerprinting. There's absolutely no reason why we would add another additional step at the local level for providers. At a time when saving affordable childcare is desperately needed, we should be finding ways to make it more accessible, not create more barriers. This zoning tax change serves no purpose other than to simply add another enor- onerous requirement to an already comprehensive process. Okay, I got two more. Carrie Seidel, One Winterberry Circle. They came to my attention this afternoon that there's an item on the agenda for discussion this evening sent forth by Consular Bartley. The item in question is item three. As a resident of the city, a full-time working mother and someone who has experienced a distinct need for childcare locally, both prior to and during a pandemic, I'm utterly appalled that Consular Bartley is putting this item forth for approval. Adding an additional barrier to in-home childcare centers not only limits their ability to provide service at a time where the need should be considered dire, but it's also outrageous to add one more thing to the plate to the childcare providers who do amazing jobs day in and day out, supporting, teaching, and caring for the children of the city. My in-home childcare center provider, provider goes through Corey checks, fingerprinting, CPR, and first aid training, complete weekly, monthly, annual reports for the state, pays for her daycare licenses, pays for her taxes to the city, and is respectful of her neighbors. Adding an unnecessary hurdle, which frankly appears to simply be a money grab, is thoughtless and disgusting. Consular Bartley should be ashamed of himself. I stand with all in-home daycare providers of the city and I hope the committee will not allow this ordinance to be put through. And then final one, Carol Maloney from 46 Upland Road. Hello, my name is Carol Maloney. I have been licensed childcare provider for twenty years. Fifteen of those years have been here in Holyoke. I have a home daycare on Upland Road. I am against the bill that would no longer allow daycare services in residential districts by right, but only by a city council permit. Home daycares are few and far between and to create another hurdle for us to get licensed and provide hard-working families this much-needed service would be a mistake. I have never had a safety issue or complaint being in a residential neighborhood. I am respectful of my neighbors and my home is no different than any other home on my street. I have up to six kids a day and with such a small capacity, we are no nuisance in any way. I would ask that you would consider creating this bill for small home daycares. We need more of them, not to discourage people like me from doing them. Thank you for consideration. Those were the five emails that we received.
Thank you. And I have one more to read in that I received this afternoon. It's from Kate Seidel here in Holyoke on Homestead Ave. Uh, good afternoon, Linda. It's come to my attention that there's an item on the agenda for discussion this evening sent forth by Consular Bartley. The item in question is number three. I'm totally against this. I've known in-home childcare providers that have provided care to children and parents in need for over thirty years. Adding additional barriers to in-home childcare centers not only limits their ability to provide service at a time when there's great needs. Only limits. These in-home providers go through Corey checks, fingerprinting, first aid training, weekly, monthly, and annual reports. They have to pay for all of this. They pay their taxes, they're respectful to their neighbors, and take care of the children in our community. I think they jumped through enough hoops for the state and frankly, I think adding more permits, barriers, and money is not the right thing to do. I hope the committee will not allow this ordinance to go through. Sincerely, Katie Seidel. So I think that completes our, um, public comment portion. And so at this point-
With a raised hand, Linda.
Oh, you have one?
Zoom, yep, someone has raised their hand.
Whoever raised their hand on the Zoom, if you wish to weigh in on public comment, you may.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes?
Yes, my name is- Yes, my name is Zulma Ferment. I reside now in Springfield, Mass, but I've been doing day, I've done daycare in Holyoke for the past nineteen years. I've been in Springfield only two years now, one year now. I used to reside at 251 Beech Street in Holyoke. And I also don't agree with the daycare council putting, you know, the restrictions or just being, um, special, what is it called, the, um, right, the special permit because, um, like a couple of gentlemen spoke earlier, we have transportation for certain kids that can't get transported by parents due because their circumstances or they're in foster care or whatever the case may be. Therefore, these buses come in, like the little school buses, and they park in front of Beech Street. And Beech Street's a one-way and it's really tough to have traffic stop there for just a second so we can get the kids off and enter our home because we have to go out there and grab the little kids and then we have to put them back in the bus in the afternoon. So a lot of cars just zoom by there. I mean, I'm pretty sure people are running late to work or some, you know, it's just happened, life, right? And we have no control over that. So imagine, you know, is there, you know, again, can we put a cop in every corner, you know? So it's just hard and I just hope that this really doesn't go through because it is very devastating and it's hard because again, just people don't always listen and we have no control over that, you know? We wish we had money to have a big, you know, parking lots or, you know, driveways, you know, but it's not the case. So thank you. I appreciate, um, listening in.
Thank you.
Two more have raised their hand.
And I did just receive another communication for this.
So, uh, somebody has raised hand. We can recognize them. And then if Jeffrey, you want to read in the email, that would be great.
All right. So Consular Jordan has had his hand read first.
Okay.
Although, I'd like to wait till the, read the letter and I can wait. I'd like to let the constituent go first.
So there's no other constituent waiting?
Yeah, this, this was the email that I received.
Okay.
Um, it's from Patricia Devine, 58 Magnolia Avenue. Um, I am against Consular Bartley's order. While I'm not sure why Consular Bartley wants to regulate this issue and especially why he chose to speak on a daycare and our guile that is no longer a business, seems personal to me. Thank you. Please vote, vote against this order.
We do have Consular Vakin. We have another, I received another email as well. Just want to read that real quick. So this is from Sonia Avila, 251 Beech Street. It is in Spanish. I will read it in Spanish. Um, y'all can translate. Estimado lector, el motivo de, mi carta es para quien lo puede interesar. Yo soy una educadora licenciada con el ECC para family childcare. Comencé desde 1993 hasta el día presente. Soy una persona eficiente con habilidades y capacidades conscientes de un buen manejo en el desarrollo del niño. Y me siento esencial para la comunidad con niños de temprana edad mientras los padres cuidan o trabajan. Con este trabajo puedo sostener a mi familia, mantener mi negocio, en detalle, mi casa y vida. Para mí es un placer transmitir esta información para que seamos reconocidos en el campo del niño en este sentido. Um, so she's against it, pretty much.
Can, can you read it in English, please?
We could go back and go do the translation in the video.
Yeah, the translation will have it.
Well,
Adam, chair.
It's a public hearing. It's a, yes?
Just a point of, uh, order, um, or more informational for everybody. Anything read into a record of a public hearing needs, a hard copy needs to be produced. Um, that's why, you know, state law and by, we, we need to make sure that we have all, all information that is given to a committee in a public hearing on record for anyone to, uh, look at in the future.
I would forward this email to the admin assistant. I'll, I'll forward this email to the admin assistant and y'all can translate.
In addition, can planning be sure to have all of the communications that have been submitted, please?
Okay, so this portion of the public hearing is completed and I would like to check in with the planning board um, as to what your intention is tonight relative to either keeping the hearing open or closing.
Thank you, uh, Consular. I guess I'll ask the members of the planning board as what their intention is. You want to close the public hearing? Or continue?
Uncomfortable closing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you guys. Uh, just want to say a couple of things. Uh, last meeting I was here, I don't know about anything but daycare, but I went to, went back and did my homework. So I know Maria since 2006 when I opened the place and she giving, uh, the daycare over there and very nice and clean because personally, I usually sometimes deliver pizza for the kid. So I checked the place, you know. So it was, uh, you know, I like to be in favor of them, you know, so to keep it, uh, safe and sound for our community and for our kids. And I know the kid went there and there was my kid's classmate. So I'm, uh, okay with to close the hearing. Thank you.
Is that a motion to close?
Yeah, I'll motion that to close the public hearing. Second the motion?
I'll second that.
Could you call the roll, please, Sharon?
I'm here. We can't hear you, Sharon. I know, sorry, I have to unmute. Uh, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Gernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Don Kelly?
Yes.
Consular Jordan, I'll recognize you.
Yep, great. Thank you so much. Um, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Uh, a couple, a couple of things. One is I also had an opportunity to really get a lot more educated on this issue.
Excuse me, can we have planning rethink that motion to close if Consular Jordan is still speaking on the topic?
Um, I, I guess we did make, we closed the public hearing. I guess we felt we have enough information in order to send our recommendation. We, we can listen to the rest of the public hearing, but it's, will be part of our record. I mean, the board felt they didn't, the board evidently felt they didn't need it, so.
Okay, so, uh, Consular Vakin, will you let us know when you are taking up the site plan review for marijuana and we will come back?
Yep.
Well, here's, here's the thing. Um, I'm just going to take his comment and then I have an agenda item, which is a joint hearing with you folks on the consent judgment and injunction relative to the signs. So I just was going to wait, let Consular Jordan finish his comment, to have the committee act and then go to the next item.
Yep.
Okay. Consular Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so again, also had an opportunity, uh, to, to get more educated on this really kind of important, interesting, uh, topic. One is, um, I came to learn is, uh, you know, just really how vital of a public service this is to, to, to have these early education, uh, providers and, and how heavily regulated they really are at this point. I had an opportunity in particular to speak to one of them, um, who was not mentioned, by the way. I will, I will mention her name here because she gave me permission to do that and her name is Mary Mako and she operates on Queen Street. Um, she's licensed, um, and she's also opposed to the ordinance, uh, change. And, um, Mary was just a wealth of knowledge and, um, first of all, um, unlike a lot of businesses, obviously, for obviously due reason, she needs, um, excuse me, any of these home-based operators, uh, require a lot of supervision by virtue of the fact that, um, you know, they're supervising children. So obviously, it's going to be heavily regulated, um, as it should be. There was, I had an opportunity to go on the state website to see that there were fifty-two licensed, operators in the city of Holyoke, of which approximately, based on my estimation, thirty-five were home-based. I think that for that group, they are so clearly, so obviously, heavily regulated onsite inspection- onsite inspections all the time, they have to renew their license every three years. They're, they're, they're covered, I mean, there's really nothing there to, to talk about, as far as I'm concerned, because if people are having a problem with a licensed operator, they have recourse. You know, one of the things that we would contemplate, um, with a special permit is really, you know, trying to protect neighbors, trying to make sure that, you know, if something is a noxious use to us, or because it's never the people that do the right thing that we need special permits for, it's always the people that don't do the right thing, and then, how do you deal with that? So in this situation, um, they do have remedy, um, as it was explained to me by Mary and, and, uh, and others, um, and doing my own research, they can go to the E E C and file complaints against licensed operators if there is a number of things that aren't going right. Um, so there really is due course for neighbors, they don't need really the protections of a special permit, um, in order to, um, get the relief that they need potentially, and, and have their, their problems, uh, addressed. I think what I did also learn, though, is that there's a problem with unlicensed operators. They're, they're really not supposed to be doing, uh, and operating unlicensed daycares, and that might be from time to time, I mean, I've been in office for quite a long time, but, and I've rarely received maybe one or two complaints about daycares over the years. Um, probably the biggest difficulty would be with those that were unlicensed and are not following all the rules, are not having the inspections. Um, but there's also, um, a course of action that you can take for them as well. Um, you can report people who are not, um, licensed. You know, if you look them up, there is a website that you can go to and see if a person in fact has a license or not, that is publicly disclosed information. So if you find out somebody's operating one of these, uh, daycare centers that does not have a license, um, you can readily check that address, and they disclose that, so that, you know, you can report, they even have a form for reporting unlicensed businesses. Obviously, anybody operating on unlicensed daycare is taking on great liability to themselves, as, as it was explained to me. So, um, I think that there is an avenue to protect residents, um, that becomes apparent to me that, um, you know, we really do not need to, to wade into this, because there are already a number of protections for the public in this area to, to solve people that are either operating illegally or conversely, are operating legally, but are doing things that, um, are problematic. And so, we don't have that in a lot of our other home-based businesses. And so, one of the things I also wanted us to consider is, you know, how are we being consistent in the application of home, um, businesses in the residential zones, and for a lot of home-based businesses, we require a home occupation permit, you know, and you're supposed to live there, just like these home-based daycares are required to. If you don't live there, that also is a potential violation. Um, that can be reported too, um, because that's one of the requirements I've come to learn. So, um, you know, these other businesses, unlike these, uh, daycare, do not have the type of regulation and licensing. Um, and we've had a number of home occupation permits come in, uh, for people that are running a home-based businesses, but again, they don't have the type of regulation and protections that this sector does, so as I've really come to, uh, to look at this and, 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 uh, and get some more information from Mary, other operators, um, state website on this, and just talking and reviewing a lot of the rules, doesn't appear that this type of a rule is really necessary at this time. Um, uh, whether we would grant, you know, obviously we would grandfather all the current people, but even for new ones, um, I think what we need to do is, um, you know, either get more information out about existing rules and regulations, we really don't need new rules and regulations. Um, this looks to be a field that's pretty heavily covered already, and, um, I think enough said about it at this point, so, um, I, I did want to just, uh, share that, um, based on, uh, a follow-up from our last discussion, and also to express the, the concerns of one of my constituents on it. Obviously, I know a number of the other people that spoke, and I've heard nothing but glowing things about a number of these operators, so, uh, I wanted to share that with the, uh, with the committee on their behalf.
Thank you, Consular.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Before, alright, so, one thing, I just wanted to say. I wanted to say thank you to all those that came out and spoke up on this matter. Um, thank you for being a voice and helping us out, because I think at the last council meeting, we tried to make it leave to withdraw, and it got pushed to this public hearing, so at the same time as I'm thanking you, I'm apologizing that it's gotten to this level too, at the same time, we tried to kill it before, so that it doesn't get to this level, because other counselors were stating that they needed to learn more and understand more, although myself and some of the other counselors that are here were kind of educating on the E C C and on the processes that they had to go through, and some of the hoops that some of, uh, the daycare providers have to jump through, but, uh, I, I guess apparently they had to take it upon themselves to, to see it for themselves and learn from someone else. Um, and, and I, I guess, we're, we're at this point now. So I would like to make a lotion, motion for leave to withdraw of this order, eh, for the second time, and let's see if we can make it possible here, or?
So, Consular Rivera, there is a process that we have to follow, and to your points, um, when a counselor files an order, the full council decides where it goes, and when it is relative to zoning, it goes into a public hearing process. And I, for one, didn't know much about home daycares, and I appreciate all the feedback that people gave, and I'm going to guess that Consular Bartley, who had heard some complaints from constituents, has also become much more educated through this process, which is why we have public hearings, so that we can inform ourselves and we can be informed, and that's all in the interest of transparency. Um, we all know, who've been around for a while, um, oftentimes, things are said as facts, um, but they are best aired in the public forum, with the public being able to speak out and share information. And usually through this process, I have found over the years, we come up with a pretty good outcome. Um, I myself learned a lot, we should never, in my view, just shut somebody down because we don't agree with them, because that's where we start tripping into dangerous territory. So I appreciate all the feedback, people educated me on this much more than I had been, and I find myself in agreement that, um, it is a highly regulated, um, business already. So what I would like to do is entertain a motion from the committee.
Consular Bacon, can I have a? Can I make a request first?
Consular McGivern?
A bit quick, I, I just don't understand, or I just want to make sure that I, we all understand. This is an educational use, my understanding is we cannot regulate through zoning educational uses, it's unconstitutional, I think we all know the court case for that, so I just would ask, you know, before we take our final vote, the, uh, the law department weighs in on that, how we can add regulation to an educational use through zoning?
Madam Chair?
Law Department, if I could.
Yeah, um, well.
Consular Jourdain, I'll recognize you.
Yeah, um, I think the general prevailing view, uh, to Consular McGivern was that we couldn't do any regulation in this area. And I think what prompted the conversation was a legal opinion came back that said we could, and, and that is what sort of prompted, what, in the case of Consular Bartley, he can speak for himself, but why he apparently chose to file this, so once, uh, the legal opinion came back that it could be potentially regulated, the question is, should or should we not do that? And at which point, um, you know, a number of us went to work, and again, um, I think it's good to have these discussions, and I think it's, um, it, it's good to, to actually do your own homework. I'm, I'm not in the school of thought of, you know, I'll just take your word for it, uh, I'm not, I'm not too big on that, I like to do my own uh, research, um, because if I just started taking people's word for things in this chamber, uh, I would be ro- much, uh, wrong, more wrong than, uh, than correct. Um, the, I don't, the overall percentage of rightness in this room is, uh, probably less than a weatherman at this point. So, um, I, I tend to like to do my own, uh, research, and, uh, that tends to come to good outcomes, so, I think we just had one the other day with a twelve to one vote.
Thank you, so, uh, back to the committee, um, the legal.
On my request?
So, let me just finish my thought, thank you. Um, so, the point that Legal made was that home daycares could be regulated, should the city council so choose. They do provide an educational function, but they are licensed as a daycare. But we can close the public hearing, we can still request Legal to weigh in before ordinance takes a vote on the matter, to advise us if they would also be considered educational, or if they are properly, um, classified as a daycare for licensing purposes. So, um, Attorney Dagman, are you clear on the question?
Uh, yes, I am, and if, if you'd like a response, or should I wait?
Oh, if you're ready to respond, that would be great.
Yeah, because I was looking at section three, chapter forty A, which specifically says you cannot regulate childcare facilities. It also mentions, uh, what we have here, family daycare centers. So they're actually listed, and they're not listed as educational under the, under the law. So that's why, because we wanted to make sure that we got this right, and, um, it actually specifically addresses what we're talking about tonight. Uh, we can't do childcare facilities, we can do family, uh, daycare under section three. So, um, that's how I respond to, uh, to the question.
Okay, thank you very much, so back to committee, I would be interested to entertain a motion relative to the public hearing. Is the committee ready to close?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. So this public hearing is closed, and we await a recommendation from the planning board. So I'll entertain a motion to take up item two.
Hey, can we?
And reopen the public hearing?
I would like to make a motion to, can I vote on item three, can we vote on item three today as a committee?
No, we need to wait for the recommendation from the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to take up item two. And reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Um, favor?
Aye.
So this is the public hearing continued from a number of dates to review and amend section six point four, the zoning ordinance to be in compliance with the consent judgment and permanent injunction ordered by Honorable Mark G. Mastrioni dated April twelfth, twenty nineteen, and any other updates to streamline the ordinance, so our public hearing is now open.
Like to entertain a motion for the planning board to open our public hearing for zone text change, section six four signs, um, for compliance per April twelfth, twenty nineteen judgment induced by Consular Lisi.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Second.
Would you call the roll, Sharon? Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Gernander?
Uh, Gernander is left.
Thank you. Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
It's four to zero.
Okay, so I have an update relative to this, um, I know since last year, there had been efforts to get a subcommittee together to work on a more comprehensive overview and rewrite of the ordinance, but, um, there's been a consistent lack of participation in that regard. So I believe, um, I could be corrected, at the last public hearing, I asked Legal to provide us with a draft of some language that would bring our ordinance into legal compliance, because we've been sitting here now for two years, um, out of compliance. So everybody should have, uh, a draft of an ordinance that would simply delete the offensive portions of the sign zone language, uh, ordinance language, um, and bring us into compliance, um, and then we would be out of, from under the injunction. And essentially, for those of you who may not have it, and, oh, thank you for sharing that, for those of you who don't have it, you can now read it on the screen. But it's essentially getting rid of the vehicle issue and, um, restrictions on dates. So un- unless, um, people want to further debate and discuss this, I would suggest that we fix this, and that if down the road, somebody wants to undertake a more comprehensive sign review, that, um, an order could be filed by a current counselor. But I'll hear from committee members, what is your wish? I can't see you, but.
Madam Chair.
I'll recognize whoever wishes to speak.
So, where, this is Israel Rivera?
Consular Rivera.
Okay.
I can see you now.
So for clarification, right, we're deleting the following language of temporary signs shall not be placed on affixed to vehicles, permanent signs affixed to vehicles, and we're replacing it with nothing, we're just deleting it in general?
Yes, and the second bullet as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, okay. So I'll defer to the planning board, um, if you think we're ready to close, or if you wish to pursue more comprehensive review.
I think, Consular, we're probably ready to close the public hearing, I'd ask for a motion for members to do that.
Although I would like to say that I think that this change is reasonable, but we have quite another, quite a number of other changes that need to be made, so I hope that that will be, the orders will be filed to reconsider other portions of the sign ordinance that need to be addressed.
Agreed, but I guess right now we're dealing with this one specific issue, so.
Well, I think this is a big and situation here. Um, we can take care of this, which has been on for two years now, as the show of ordinance has just reminded us. We can get it off the agenda, and we can start a process to consider the sign ordinance as a whole, and for now, I will happily make a motion to close the public hearing on this.
I'll second that.
Okay, Sharon, do you call the roll, please?
Uh, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
So ordinance committee? Are you ready to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Yeah, motion to close a public hearing on item two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the public hearing on this is closed, and we will await a recommendation from planning relative to the legal form that we all have. Thank you, um, now Sharon, you mentioned another order?
Uh, yes, I think it's number nine on your agenda, it's the site plan review, the marijuana establishments. We continued our public hearing to tonight to rejoin up with you.
Oh, perfect, and we've been waiting for language from you to fix it.
So once you're open, we will, right, once you're, it's open, we'll address it.
Okay, so hang on, um, I would entertain a motion from committee to go out of order to open the public hearing for for item nine?
So moved.
Is there a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our public hearing is open to amend the zoning ordinance to correct the site plan review process in section seven point ten point six point five B, thank you.
Intertain a motion, planning board, to reopen the public hearing, to take up section seven, ten, six, five, marijuana establishment regarding the site plan review process.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, Sharon?
Uh, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
So Chair Kelly, my last note that I had written was that we were waiting for legal and planning relative to the fix for the ordinance.
Mr. Kelly, Mimi's hand is up.
Who's hand is up, please?
Mimi's is up.
Yeah, go ahead, Mimi.
Just in case you want me to do the summary here.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Basically, I think we are prepared to send you, or send the legal department, language to be put into final legal form for your next meeting. And I think we're probably also prepared to close. And we had been concerned about what we could recommend to you under the current order, which explicitly addresses one portion of the marijuana ordinance. We did have a brief discussion with Attorney Bissonnet earlier in the evening, and he felt that we could send you language that addresses another portion of 7.10.5, rather, 6.5, because if we don't also talk about 7.5, 6.4, you'll have a section there that is pointing to a procedure that no longer exists. But this is a simple linguistic fix now that we have the go-ahead to do it, and as long as it is all right with you, we will get that to you very shortly.
It sounds fine to me.
Okay.
All right.
Then...
I'll entertain, go ahead, Mimi.
I was going to move to close this public hearing unless anyone else had anything they wanted to say.
Right. Second motion?
Second.
Do you call the roll, please, Sharon?
Yeah, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Planning board, I will see you at the other side.
Thank you all.
We'll be there shortly.
I gotta come down and open the door for you, so hang in there.
So ordinance committee, we need to wait for the legal form so that we can review it and consider it, but since planning is closed, I'd like to entertain a motion to close our public hearing on item 9.
Motion to close the public hearing on item 9?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. I'll entertain a motion to take up item 5.
So moved. Motion to take up item 5?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion to open the public hearing that's continued from 3/22 for the special permit application of WTM SBLLC at 120 Middle Water Street to operate a marijuana cultivation and manufacturing establishment. So do I have a motion and a second to open the hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing for WTM SBLLC, continued from the 22nd? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So is there somebody from WTM with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, Jim Valeriani with the Mensing Group.
Hello, Mr. Valeriani. We have a variety of correspondence from you, and we have a correspondence from planning relative, oh, let me see, let me make sure I'm looking at the right one. Did you have a site plan review with the planning board in March?
On March 22nd, we were unanimously approved. It was filed April 1st with the clerk, and the appeal period has passed.
Yes, and I did receive that letter dated April 1st.
Very good.
For the benefit of the committee, and the committee has it as well, from Jeffrey.
Thank you.
So did you want to just do a quick overview relative to your letter that you sent?
Yes, and I hope that that is, I hope we can move quickly through this. Good evening to the committee. We have with us a number of consultants and representatives of the owners of WTM SBL. Our architect is with us. We started this process in December. It's been four months now. We had a three-month process with planning board, again unanimously approved. We've had letters submitted by DPW and planning. We've responded to those. We did meet with this committee on March 22nd. It was late in the evening. It was a busy evening for the committee. You accomplished a great deal. So we gave our site plan overview by Terry Reynolds, our civil engineer. Terry is not with us this evening, but given site plan review and given he gave his overview, it was my expectation that this evening, we would entertain any questions and show our architecturals our elevations, which I don't believe we had a chance to do the last time around. But to, to further, just go into the, a little bit about the site, it is a little over 2 acres with an 28,000 square foot, single-story block, concrete block building, and that'll be used for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this project. About 2/3 of the lot is just vacant land. It's completely underutilized in a heavy industrial area. And our Phase 3 will involve the construction of an addition of 36,000 square feet in total, two levels, 18,000 square feet per level. State-of-the-art facility, well-designed. Again, Jeff McKinney, our architect, can show those elevations, or I can do it if he's unable to share. It's a fantastic use. It's an area that is being, how should I say this? Is being upgraded, is being rejuvenated by our company and another marijuana company called Alaska Assets adjoining us, which received a special permanent site plan approval for manufacturing and cultivation. So they've got their approvals. These projects will be going on for a few years, but they're for cultivation manufacturing. It's the right location. No residential properties nearby, no schools. It's the type of area that I think genuinely the city would like to see rehabilitated. And we are doing that. The company owns the property. They have a provisional license, security approval by the police, and a drain, stormwater drainage approval by the Board of Public Works. So this is one of our last steps in the permitting process. We're very eager to go. It's been quite some time for us through the permitting process. And if Jeffrey, do you see if Jeff McKinney is on? Can he raise his hand to show our architecturals?
I did see him on earlier. He does not appear to be on now.
Okay, can I, can I just get that opportunity? Can I share screen right now?
Sure, let me just set you up. One moment.
I think when you see these architecturals, the committee, you'll see...
All right, you should have screen share now.
Okay. Okay, so that's, can you see this right here, everybody? Are you able to?
Not yet.
Not yet, forgive me. So here we are.
Yes.
Very good. So this is our development. This is the existing concrete block building, which will have the exterior, a new facade. Phases 1 and 2 will occur inside this building. This is the new addition. It's a, it's a state-of-the-art material that is, it's sort of intended to be a modern industrial look that fits with the old brick mill buildings. So this entire area right now is just a dirt surface. And again, there's another marijuana company that is developing this area in here. You've got the railroad tracks in the rear, railroad tracks in the front, third level canal, the river. So as you can see, it's highly industrial, and that is a bird's-eye view elevation. I will go to, okay, so here are some elevations, again showing, I think this is showing from Middle Water Street, and this is showing from Cabot in Middle Water at the intersection. And that new building again is Phase 3. We will not be undertaking that for approximately two years. And here are some more elevations. We are, we have worked with planning board. They did indicate perhaps some faux windows could be installed or other materials to break up the solid facade. We didn't feel that was necessary, but we indicated prior to finalizing our architecturals for Phase 3, we would check back in with them to see if they wanted anything else to break up what they felt was a large mass of wall, which it is, but however, most mill buildings are, I think, that way. So those are the elevations. Is there anything else you'd like to see with those? I can show a few photos.
Jeffrey did send those to us. Counsel Rivera, you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question on the facade. The facade, that's metal or is it, it's painted, it's painted red to look like brick, but it's metal, right?
Oh, yes, it is. And it's a composite siding, but it's manufactured in that, whatever color is, this is the color we chose to blend in with the brick mill buildings, but it's a composite, state-of-the-art, very tight products, because we want these facilities to be that way. And so it is, it's manufactured in this color, which we thought would fit with, again, the setting there with the old mill buildings.
Can I have, can I ask a question?
Counsel Maldonado-Velez?
Hello, Attorney Valerini. The bird's-eye view, can you go back to that real quick? I guess that one. I guess my question is, so I saw this is cultivators, so like, those people that are coming in and out are mostly like 8 to 3, like more, mostly scheduled, right?
Oh, yes. Originally, we're going to have just typical industrial hours. When we first start off with Phases 1 and 2 in the existing block building, we're going to have above 15 employees. When the second, when the addition is built for two stories for Phase 3, that will add another 15 or 20. So we're looking at approximately 30 full-time jobs, and the parking requirements for those 30 jobs are only eight, and we're providing 30 spaces.
I was asking, is the only entrance to the lot, like the one right there off Cabot, is that the only way to get into that? Or is there like, was it South Canal?
It'll be right in this vicinity. There's a 50-foot wide access area that consists of two 20-foot wide easements that have been shared between these two properties since the 1870s, since these mill buildings were developed. So all access and egress will be right along here.
I'm just asking, I know...
And that's the late spend, all these years.
Thank you, thank you. No, I'm just asking, I'm just wondering, because I know there's another business, another marijuana business opening in that same area, which is good. It's a good thing to have, you know, more businesses popping up, but I think something that was mentioned in the last meeting was around like just safety and given that there's going to be much more traffic, like just having that one entrance there, that's just my question. I guess technically it's a good problem to have, but I just, that's, yeah, if that's the only...
Yeah, that other company is going to, is leasing parking over in this area, if you can see where I'm indicating. So their parking is being leased here, and their employees, I don't recall how they'll get into their building, but obviously there is pedestrian access along Middle Water. But even so, our parking is all in here. You see existing parking for the existing building here. New parking will be in here, and the adjoining property owner, it's my understanding, their deliveries will occur in this area, but their parking is over here to the, to the west.
Okay, thanks. So, 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 just to clarify, the only entrance to these parking lots is through Cabot Street? There's no other entrance, like on the other side of the canal?
It's from Middle Water, Middle Water is here. This is the access right here, and this is Cabot.
Yeah, from the main road, not the Middle Water, from the main road.
There's no access from Cabot Street. The Cabot Street and Middle Water intersect, so vehicles would come along Cabot, then go down Middle Water, and they would ingress and egress right in this area that I'm indicating between these three old mill buildings and our property. We've had a traffic analysis done. There is no issues, and we have more parking than we need.
Thank you. I think Counsel Governor's gonna ask my question better.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
Counsel Governor, I hear you.
So I think, the question is, is there a bridge that we don't see that gives access outside of Cabot Street on the other side over there, from like the rookie street side?
Like further down that we don't see on the map?
Let me share this again.
No, there's, 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 the Connecticut, the canal ends up...
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's a train track bridge, which we call Rusty Bridge in South Hollywood.
So there's not a...
Right, no, that doesn't connect to the next road over. No, the, the train track goes over a body of water that kind of goes into the Connecticut River-ish.
Yeah, that's the third level canal.
Right. So there is no access to the other side.
Okay, thank you.
No, there is no access to the other side of Cabot. No, no, and we will not access Cabot Street, so people can turn right and cut up over the bridge. Everything will be from this existing way, Middle Water Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members or council members in the chamber? Not hearing any, not seeing any?
I don't have any questions. I just wish that the building would be a brick building, but it is what it is.
Well, at least it's constructed with the color and it's not painted and will peel.
Madam Chair, if I may, we have no opposition to this project. We've been working on it for quite some time, but none was made at planning or at our last meeting with your committee, but I know if you want to open it up to the public, I don't believe in you.
Well, I just want to be sure, because we're in a public hearing, that I offer the opportunity for any member of the public to speak in favor or against.
Absolutely.
And I'll count on Jose and Jeffrey to let me know if there is anybody in the queue. And if not, then I will seek a motion from the committee.
Madam Chair, if I may, forgive me.
Yes.
Where, if I may, and I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but just giving our permitting timetable and our strong desire to move ahead, we are hoping for a favorable recommendation and that we, if I may suggest, that we'd be able to be on the full city council on May 3rd, if that's at all possible.
Well, I will see. I'm not hearing or seeing any further questions from committee information, and the follow-up that had been requested on the 22nd has been received by us. The April 1st letter that you referred to on the 22nd, we have. So I'm not hearing anything for public comment. So my first request to committee would be to close the public hearing. I would like a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing for item 5.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So not hearing many questions from committee and having the questions that were raised answered tonight or prior to tonight, is there a motion from committee relative to approval of this special permit tonight?
So motion to approve special permit application of WTM SBLLC at 120 Middle Water Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the special permit? Say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I have a question before I vote.
Counsel Jordan?
Are there, isn't there a standard set of conditions that we usually tend to put on these?
Oh, yes, you're right, and I have them actually printed out right in front of myself.
So I just want to make sure those all get added.
That's a very good point, and I thank you for making it. So Attorney Valeriani, I believe you are familiar with the seven standard conditions that we have for special permits, but I'll read them into the record to be sure.
Okay, I am. I do have them in front of me from a past project.
Okay. You see the conditions 1 through 7, so if everybody agrees that we're stipulating to those...
If I may, Madam Chair, forgive me, but I know, we have a commitment under our host community agreement with the city to make a... make, uh, reasonable efforts to hire locally. Uh, your conditions do put a minimum of thirty percent Hollyoke residents, uh, for non-security jobs. We're certainly going to try to make that, but I'd like to see that as more of a, uh, uh, an endeavor, a, a, an effort be made rather than a minimum.
I hear you on that, and, um, I, I believe that it has been pretty much a standard condition with that thinking generally in mind.
Okay.
Of course, we are trying to make, um, these businesses accessible to local residences and hoping to provide, um, good gainful employment for our residents, particularly those in a walkable area if possible. Thank you. Mm-hmm. So if everybody is comfortable stipulating to the seven conditions that they have had provided to them in writing, then, um, if the amend, if the motion to approve this special permit with the standard conditions could, uh, be amended to include those?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion to just add the seven standard conditions we've been doing for everybody else. Um, then I would be happy.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so all in favor of the amended, um, motion to approve the special permit?
Yes.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? The motion passes five zero. We will recommend this special permit for approval with the seven conditions at our next city council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the committee. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, and thank you. Motion to take up item six?
Motion to take up item six and open up the public hearing?
Yep, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
So item six is the public hearing for the special permit application of Green Grab Inc. at six twenty Bolio Street to operate a marijuana establishment for marijuana cultivation, product manufacturing, and delivery. Um, I believe at our last meeting, it was clarified that it was for delivery. But I would like to let the applicant give us an update if they're here.
Yeah, there's a couple of us here. Um, my name's Marvin Cable. I am one of the attorneys, counsel is be as another one of the attorneys. O'Dallas, um, Brenton is here, um, and there might be some others. Uh, but at least, you know, I can speak to that. Um, so this is just delivery. Um, however, in the future, in this building, there will be, or hopefully will be cultivation, product manufacturing, and potentially a retail. But at this moment, um, it just financially, um, doesn't make sense for the applicant. So right now, the focus is just marijuana delivery operating.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we have a letter before us dated March twenty-second from the planning department. And of course, we were meeting on the twenty-second, so everything was all happening at the same time. Um, as I've looked over the twenty-second document, and I think you may have touched on this at the last hearing, but just for the benefit of making sure we're all on the same page, I wanted to confirm that relative to the second page of their letter, I think you told us that you were going to have one or two vans doing the delivery. Am I right on that?
Yeah, so that would be the initial, uh, start. I mean, obviously, we have to see what the orders are and what the demand is, but I believe, O'Dallas, correct me if I'm wrong, the max right now would be four. That'd be the max, but I think, you know, one to two makes the most sense at the beginning. Is that correct, O'Dallas?
Yes, yes, just to begin acquiring customers and starting to build the client base to support the more vehicles coming in.
Right. Because the next question that follows is, as your business grows and then as you have more vans, um, how much growth can you accommodate with the parking? And will you be parking the vans overnight at six twenty Bolio, or will people be taking them home? Um.
Sure. So the good part about this is that others, the other parking spaces aren't being used right now, at least for, I don't know, a year or so. So if it does get to be very successful, uh, obviously, there'll be parking there and other places won't be in operation. Um, however, if, um, the other facilities are in operation, the CCC regulations, uh, explicitly allow for the vans to be parked off-site as long as they're done so, uh, in accordance with the CCC regulations.
Um, and did you end up going into a contract for any waste management that you would have relative to deliveries that didn't get delivered, et cetera?
Yeah, so, uh, this company called Clean Management Environmental Group Incorporated, um, is who we would be using for, um, cannabis waste. Uh, and in the facility itself, there's a designated area where the waste would be, um, held, and it's a locked area. Um, and if there were other, um, uh, operations happening, they would all be divided out. So, um, you know, uh, the other operators can't go into that, that waste uh, and, um, touch it or deal with it. Uh, but yes, we, we contracted with Clean Management Environmental Group.
So can you, do you have a, did you give a copy of that contract to anybody in planning, or does anybody have a co- copy of it as part of your application?
Um, no, we weren't asked to. Um, I didn't know that we'd have to do that, but I'm, uh, O'Dallas, I'm, I'm, we could probably pull one of those up if you'd like, right? Um, I don't know what the, the status is, but that's, we can get that for you if you'd like.
But you have it?
Um, from what I've said, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, the other thing that we were recommended to obtain from you is, and I hear you on the shared parking and the other people aren't there yet, et cetera, et cetera. But do you have any, um, is there a plan that, at least for the initial phase of your operation, you have dedicated parking? And then if other spaces need that parking, you will update it with CCC, um, in terms of meeting their continued regs? So if we were to take this letter from planning dated March twenty-second and make that as part of our conditions that you would comply with the recommendations and requests of that letter, are you familiar with it? And would you be comfortable with us including that, um, as part of our recommendation for your special permit?
Absolutely, and we were planning on that anyways. Yes.
Okay, okay. So you have a copy of this March twenty-second letter?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Um, sorry, committee, I'm not trying to usurp the whole hearing here. Um, is there any committee member that has questions for the applicant?
Um, Madam Chair?
Counsel Givner?
I'm just wondering if there's plans to grow in the future, if, um, you are thinking of the parking for that point in time and the, the waste disposal?
Yes.
Okay, so for the next two years, as a delivery business, you should not need parking or much disposal, correct?
Yes.
Right.
All right. Thanks for clarifying.
A lot of these, just a touch point on the waste management, a lot of these products will be prepackaged on purchase. So it'll kind of minimize the amount of, you know, trash that'll be put in, you know?
Right. Right. Um, is there anything the applicant would like to add for the committee to consider in terms of an update from our last meeting?
I don't know about an update. Um, I should say, though, that we are happy to be here. We're hoping that you, uh, grant approval. Uh, we've been looking forward to this for a long time, and we're ready to get going. Uh, so no updates, but we're just excited to be here and get going.
Okay, and should we move it forward, even though you're just delivery right now, we would stipulate to our standard conditions, even though at the moment some of them wouldn't apply, as the regulations change, something might? And as you add things, something else might? Um, so just FYI, are you familiar with the seven standard conditions that we put?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, committee members, any other questions that you have? Counsel Jordaine, anything? Making sure I'm not missing you?
Uh, no, nothing. Um, I'm ready to close the public.
Okay. All right, is that a motion?
It is.
Oh, wait, 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 before we do that, I just want to make sure there's nobody here from the public to speak either for or against this special permit before we take any further steps. Jeffrey, Jose, is there anybody that you can see?
We're all sat here in the chambers.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I'm dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. So now.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. Is there a motion on the special permit for Green Grab Inc.? I, I can't hear you.
Motion to pass, uh, item number six, which is a special permit for application for Green Grab Inc. at six twenty Bolio Street, um, with the seven conditions.
Second.
And, and compliance with the letter of March twenty-second from planning.
And compliance with the March twenty-second.
Number eight. Okay.
I'll second both.
Okay, then all in favor of the special permit for Green Grab?
Aye.
To recommend to city council, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero to recommend approval of the special permit to the city council. Thank you, and thank you, folks from Green Grab.
Thank you. Thank you. Very exciting.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Motion to take up. Motion to take up item seven and open up the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So item seven is a public hearing continued from March twenty-second for a special permit application of River Grove LLC at four seventy-five Canal Street to operate a marijuana cultivation and manufacturing establishment. So River Grove was with us at our last meeting. And is, is there a representative from River Grove here with us tonight?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. This is Sean Coleman on behalf of River Grove. I'm here tonight with my colleague Nicholas Goans, who's the other owner of River Grove LLC, as well as our architect, Jim Harwood.
Okay, great, welcome. Um, now we covered quite a bit relative to your application. Um, relative to March twenty-second, we now have before us a letter from the planning board dated March twenty-second. Um, and it noted that many of the things had been provided, and it did, uh, suggest that we should seek, um, the specific information relative to your waste disposal plan?
Yes, we provided that. Um, it's part of our submission to the CCC as well, and would certainly be part of the architectural review. The CCC documents are like over two hundred pages, so we made that upon request. That was a specific request, and so we provided that as an attachment in our response. I don't, I don't know if the committee was able to review that, but we tried to provide that. It's a document that outlines all the different steps and kind of mirrors the regulations and everything that we're required to do to dispose of the waste.
So hang on and bear with me for a second. Is that in one of these updated letters that came back to our committee or that went to CCC?
This should be in our March eleventh response as exhibit, um, I'm going to give you the exhibit number. So we pointed out with red arrows the location of the waste disposal facilities in the floor plan. And then also provided as an attachment, the submission that we make to the state. Um, that would also govern, you know, any sort of local regulations that we would follow. It's called Waste Disposal Summary, it's in, it's exhibit two.
Right, and so I'm just a little puzzled and I don't, don't totally, um, understand. But they are in their March twenty-second letter, um, recommending So you're saying in appendix F, the location is pointed out? And they're saying it's recommended that the information be provided to the city council prior to any permit approvals? But you're saying you already provided it to planning?
Yes, that's right. We delineated it in the plans. We incorporated it as part of our plans. There's two different places that we located it, and we put some red arrows. And then the plan itself of how we're going to actually execute it is outlined in, in writing in exhibit two.
All right. So to the extent that you answer us verbally, and are you comfortable if we just attach this three twenty-two letter with those recommendations to our standard conditions um, relative to any recommendation we might make on the special permit, just to be sure that whatever CCC approves, that we're all on the same page with the documents?
Yes, that's fine.
I'm, I'm just getting a little caught up between February and March, um, and why they're saying the same thing in March, that's all.
That's all right, no problem at all. We can incorporate that.
And can you, and if you've already done this, I apologize for having you repeat it. Um, but can you let us know how employees and visitors would be getting into the site from the different parking areas that you have delineated? Is there just one entrance?
That's right. There's only one entrance for security reasons that a person can travel through. A truck can come in multiple ways. Um, but there's only one secure entrance for the employees or visitors.
Okay. And then the other question that we're circling around a lot with these applications lately is parking. So it seems like when everybody starts out, they don't need too much parking. But then, of course, if everything comes to fruition, then it seems like there will be a lot of competition for parking. So um, from what we're seeing, it looks like there's twenty-seven spaces. Um, but then something referenced approximately forty-four spaces. So is it a different use of space that would be contemplated if it was needed? That you're saying would be possible?
Um, we originally did forty-four, but twenty-seven is our official number that we put on the drawings, and that's what we would expect. I believe it was forty-four before we did some landscaping. We agreed to do some green space and move some things around and that, and move some spaces to a different location, and that's why it's twenty-seven instead of forty-four. So twenty-seven is the correct number.
Is the number. Okay, just to clarify. And then I think you might have already answered.
The number of spaces so that we could reduce the number of paving. So.
Okay.
So we were able to reduce the paving, so we were able to improve the drainage, so that, um, it, it, it avoids the need to, to do any further drainage structures because we've um, reduced the amount of impervious paving on the site. That resulted in a, a drop in parking spaces, but the parking is more than adequate for the business at its full operation.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then one remaining question, because we've been having a lot of, um, more conversations relative to odors and this and that relative to man, manufacturing and cultivation. And one of the recommendations planning made was that we should clarify as to whether CO2 would be used. And if it will be used, where it would be located on the premises. So I'm not sure what you'll be using, but is that part of it?
CO2 is not part of our plan, our manufacturing plan. If we did decide to use in the future, we would have to go through uh, another rigorous permitting process to include that, and we are not doing that at this point.
All right, thank you. Um, committee members, not to be hogging the public hearing, do any of you have any questions or open issues on this special permit application?
No, Madam Chair.
Not seeing any hands? Counsel Givner?
I said, nope, Madam Chair.
Oh, oh, I, I only heard Madam Chair. Okay, um, we are in a public hearing, so to be sure, um, Okay, um we are in a public hearing, so to be sure, um Jose and Jeffrey, if you could see if there's anybody online or in the chambers that wishes to speak for or against this special permit?
We're good in the chambers.
And we're good on Zoom.
Okay, um.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for item seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the hearing is closed, five to zero. Now, I have been asked by our engineer to add a condition eight. Does the applicant stipulate to the seven standard conditions that are generally known?
Yes, we're aware of the seven and stipulate to those.
Okay, so our engineer has asked us to add a condition number eight. And that reads, the condition of the existing piping in the building is to be verified as well as the condition of the existing sewer service outside the existing building. This is to be completed along with testing to confirm that all existing roof and our storm drains have been separated from the sewer service prior to application for a building permit. That is coming from our engineer looking out for the water safety issues. Um are you comfortable with that condition being added as number eight?
Uh this sounds like Jim's territory, but I think we already actually discussed this and are comfortable with that condition, but I don't want to speak for Jim. I'll let him talk about the water.
It, it, based on the documents that were available, it looks like it's already been done, but we're more than happy to verify uh as we get into the full building permit set. But to be clear, this is when we're applying for a building permit, not while we're seeking, yes.
Correct.
Yep, that's fine, of course.
Correct, correct. So um what I would like to ask from the committee is um if there is a motion to approve the special permit that we have the seven standard conditions and we add the eighth condition that I just read into the record. And that we reference the March twenty-second letter and note that there will be twenty-seven parking spaces and there will be no CO2 used. And that um the waste disposal plan is in the application and that you have a provider uh for the waste disposal. That was a clarification recommended from them. So if you have that provider, which I believe you do, um for, under the waste disposal plan. Um that letter will just stipulate that as part of the condition of the special permit. It's just making sure that any open items are completed before the actual issuance of the special permit.
We understand.
Do you have the letter? Do you have the letter from March twenty-second so you can see item two on there?
Not, I don't have the letter right in front of me. It seems like they have a condition that we um procure a contract with a third party to handle our waste management at some point.
Well, they just um wanted to be sure that in the waste disposal plan that it's complete. And it, and I don't know if it's a crossover of documents or what. So I just want to put it in by reference so that everything will be complete. Okay?
That's fine with us. No objection there.
Okay. Okay, so committee or since I read all these conditions in, why don't I make the motion to approve the special permit with the seven conditions? Plus the new eighth conditions, condition and the reference to the March twenty-second letter to be sure that things are complete.
So moved.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the special permit with the listed conditions and the March twenty-second letter, questions to be answered, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. So the recommendation to approve the special permit will go to the city council at our next meeting. And uh thank you folks for coming in and answering all of our questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Motion to take up item eight and open up the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight is a public hearing continued from the February twenty-second and March twenty-second and December. Special permit application for eight seventy-six Grow Inc. at three sixty Race Street to renovate and operate a marijuana cultivating and processing establishment. Um my recollection is that they were not at our last meeting but wish to be continued to tonight. And so far in front of me, I have a letter from January eleventh. And if the applicant is here and wants to update us and run through any updates, that would be great.
Hi, good, good night to everyone. How you guys doing?
Hello?
I actually was here last time, but I jumped off early because I misunderstood what happened.
Oh, okay.
So um yeah, I submitted in December for the special permit for micro cultivation at three sixty Race Street in Olio.
Yes.
And um I submitted everything that is required by the city for a special permit. And um you guys had some questions, which I went over the last meeting prior to the one that I jumped off.
Oh, okay. You're, you're talking about um Mar- earlier in March?
Yep, earlier in March.
Okay. Okay, so I had a note that I was waiting to hear back from planning, but perhaps planning is just thinking that we will follow up in this regard. Have you had any further letters from planning after July, January eleventh?
No, no, I didn't.
No, okay. Okay. Members of the committee, in looking over the January eleventh letter. Do you have questions remaining for this mic- micro cultivation project? At three sixty Race Street? So uh do you mind just telling me your name again?
My name is Danton Blake.
And do you mind just?
Madam Chair, can I have a que- I have a question here, Kevin?
Counsel Jourdain?
Yes, um when was the last time this applicant made the, an actual full presentation to the council?
Oh, the app? Um so the special permit was applied for in December. And the applicant has been in in February and March. No, in uh February twenty-second. Was the last time the applicant? Wait, wait, wait. Hang on a second.
I did present it on February twenty-second.
Yes, yes. And I, I misread the date. The, the next date was the twenty-second, but he was here and left. But he did his full presentation on February twenty-second to us, at which time we had the letter from January eleventh. So the intention at the meeting of three twenty-two was to follow up on any of the remaining open items in this letter. Um and then make a decision relative to this special permit. And if everybody has reviewed the January eleventh letter, the applicants um had answered all of the questions. Either positive or that they couldn't do it um at that time. So really, now we're at the point, does the committee have any other particular questions relative to this application? And if committee members, because it's been a while since we heard the application, would like the applicant to just give us an overview of how they will operate. Um certainly, it would be within bounds for the committee to ask for that now.
I think that would be helpful, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. So, Mr. Blake, if you could walk us through your model and um address any of the points that you think planning in particular uh wanted us to be careful of, that would be great.
Okay, so I know you guys have enough parking issues that's going on tonight. And I have seven spots and my maximum employee would be four.
Okay.
For that building to, the small micro growth.
Okay.
And um the security is submitted and approved by the chief of police.
And, and it has the, is the letter in your um application from him?
Yep, it's, it's involved.
Okay. Okay. All right, so you're saying four employees? Because it's a mic.
It's micro, so it's pretty small. It's five thousand square feet.
Okay. So that's an important distinction because we've been talking in the thousands for some of them, right? In the tens of thousands? Okay. And you would be redeveloping the building and?
Which would be inside, so DPW is not required?
Yes, and um our engineer did say that he was all set with um his part relative to the planning review. So uh we don't have anything to add from our engineer at this time. I did follow up with him. Um committee members, are there any other questions that you have?
No, Madam Chair.
So is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this special permit for a micro cultivation facility?
There's no one in the chambers to speak.
And there are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, thanks a lot. All right then, um hearing no questions. If I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close pub- public hearing?
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing is closed. Was that three votes or four or five?
Um at least.
Those are all ayes.
Three.
Are there, are there five of us here still?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So five zero to close the public hearing. Um and is there a motion relative to the special permit? And if there is a motion um to include our seven standard conditions?
I make a motion that it be approved with our seven standard conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that is five zero to approve for the special permit for eight seventy-six Grow Inc. at three sixty Race Street with the seven standard conditions. Thank you very much for coming back. I'm sorry for your misunderstanding at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I, I just jumped off for, for some strange reason. I thought you guys pushed it like further.
Okay, all right. Well, here we are, so. And this will be taken up at the next city council meeting.
All right, thanks everyone that's involved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we already did number nine. Um so I'd entertain a motion to take up items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen as package?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So item ten is that city council consider updating the demo delay ordinance with changes proposed by the historical commission. Item eleven is a one fifteen correspondence from the historical commission. Item twelve filed by Council Murphy ordered that the ordinance committee need to discuss amending the demo order regarding historical commission review to begin the process once a property has been listed by the problem property group. The goal of this would be to enhance the possibility of preserving structures and to do so prior to extensive building deterioration, which then escalates costs. And item thirteen uh communication regarding the historical commission review process. Now, we've also received a communication from the historical commission and they and we've also received a couple of letters in support of extending the demo the demolition delay ordinance that we have that is currently six months to twelve months as one piece of this. Has everybody on the committee had a chance to look over those documents?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the historical commission had a few changes in their board and so they had wanted a little extra time to look things over. The other part of this uh discussion, as I understand it, is they were hoping to get involved earlier in the process with the problem property group. So that if there were opportunities for um grants or some interventions to save properties that had historical value, that they would perhaps be at the table earlier. Um I think for that part, we might need to get some feedback from members of the problem property group. But um to the committee, how would you wish to proceed with these orders tonight?
I see that we have Paola Ferraro here as the chair of the historical commission wondering if they have anything to say or add to this discussion?
Yes, I would love to hear from Paola so that we can get a nice summary from her um and get clear on what she hopes that we might be able to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Permission to speak? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So uh just a little bit of context, I'd like to say that uh as we've been spending a lot of time looking at our demo delay ordinance, uh it's actually was a very, very well-written ordinance and it holds very well. And then there was an uh um addendum in two thousand thirteen. And right now Mas Historic is actually working to um create new guidelines for city who want to adopt demolition delay. And as I look at theirs, um uh I'm actually uh quite amazed on how good the language and the process, the processes of our ordinance. So we, if you notice, we're oh sure, um so we are not looking to change the ordinance. We are gonna, uh we're asking for three very basic changes. And in the first copy that were submitted, there were extra changes. We look through and uh um We looked through and we actually decided that there are really three basic important changes to have. And the first one is to change the name from demolition delay ordinance to preservation of historic buildings ordinance. Because, well, partially because we are in an age of positivism. So just the name, instead of saying, "No, we're stopping something," we are not. But, but it's more truthful to the name, because I would like to remind the Ordinance Commission that, in all the time that I've been on the commission, that's been quite a few years, we only issued two demolition delays. Most buildings go, so the, the ordinance is there to preserve buildings that really are valued. And that we go through a serious process to whether it's been determined by the nation, the state, or by the Historical Commission that this building are historic, and then we proceed. So, so changing the name to better render what the, what the preservation, what the demolition, and I'm not a night person, so I'm sorry about that, so I'm...
Well, thank you for your patience tonight.
No, 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 that was all interesting. But, so, again, changing the name to, um,
Preservation of Historic Buildings?
Yes, which is also the name recommended by Mass Historic now. The other reason is to go to 12 months. And the reason for that is because at six months, and I put a series about half of the municipality, more than half of the municipality in Massachusetts that have adopted a demolition delay ordinance, they go for 12 to 18 months. And the reason for that is because in terms of having an effective tool to block the demolition. And, you know, the two cases where we issue a demolition delay, we could not save the buildings, and they were Mater Dolodosa and a small four-apartment houses, house on Walnut Street at 120 to 124 Walnut Street. And if we had had 12 months, we would have had time to make both buildings into single-building historic district, by which they couldn't not have been demolished. But one thing that's also very important to notice is the Historical Commission does not have the power by itself to make a building a single-building historic district or a block, a single-block historic district. There has to be City Council approval. So that very building, in all, in order to be, to be elected to the status, will need the approval of the council. So, again, it is a process that is democratic and it's done to, we just want to enable the city to conserve its asset. And we want, of course, and the process in itself, if, you know, one of the things that are said at Mass Historic Workshop all the time, if you don't have the community behind it, you will not be able to save a building. So, we feel that 12 months, it's our tool to bring, there is a building or an architectural structure that needs to be saved, is the time that we need to start a process that then will enable the community to decide.
Okay.
And the, the other change is that we would like to change the age of building from 100 years old to 75 years old. And that will bring us to 1947. And, you know, if it were for me, because of, I really like mid-century modern architecture, I would go to 50 years. But we realize that probably 75 years, and, you know, there's a lot of beautiful buildings from the 1940s. And so I think that was an important change for us to, to make. And the last change is, and, and it's interesting, in terms of communicating when a demolition delay hearing is going to happen, so we would like to add, to post a sign on the buildings that can be read from the street, that are going to have a demolition delay hearing. And the reason we add that, I spoke to people at Mass Historic, and I asked, what should it be? Should it be just a sign on the building? Should it be putting it in the paper? And the answer that I had was, you have to look at what your community does to be informed. And, but I did not put in the ordinance that it should be on a "Hello, Holyoke." That's probably the best way to communicate, but the truth is that we have people who read the paper, and there are people who walk, and people that live in the neighborhood that don't read the paper. So it would be one step more to inform a community that may not read and might not have internet.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that great summary, because I do remember reading through those materials that you sent over to us, but it's very helpful to hear it again. I just have one question, and then I'll give it over to the committee. If we were to extend the age, or reduce the age, from 100 to 75, I guess my question is, how many buildings would that add? And do we already have a lot that are 100 years old or more that we have to deal with? I mean, would we be creating a lot more to deal with? Or would we, in your view, be creating more of an opportunity? I, it's just a little hard for me to understand how that would work.
Op- opportunity for...
To save the buildings if they were considered historical, or, I don't know?
Well, you know, it, it's interesting, because extending it to, and again, extending it to 75 years.
Yeah.
Right now, sitting down, I cannot tell you how many buildings that go from... So, if you were under 100 years, right now, it's building up to 1922. Sitting here, I, I couldn't tell you. Probably in the next meeting, I will be able to.
Okay.
How many buildings from 1922 to 1947 are very valuable? And that's the reason why I want to decrease the age, because you look at Holyoke, and you know that there are important, beautiful buildings between 1922 and 1947. And a lot of them are already on the Massachusetts, on the Holyoke Historic Registry. A lot of them are on the National Registry, but, again, there, it's in po, in this city, it's impossible to catalog them all.
Okay.
And that is, that is the reason, because I know there are buildings out there that are important, that don't follow under any of the category that would bring them to preservation.
Okay, okay. Are there any committee members that have questions? Comments?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Paola for her hard work on this area in particular, and the Historic Commission. I think you guys just do a fantastic job. I really appreciate all your work. It's, it's really important to our, our city's history, to our city's character. And, and you're really doing really important work. I just want to thank you for that, number one. Number, number, number two is, I think back, I believe it was 2000 when I filed the original demolition delay ordinance. And I'm really very thankful that I did at the time. It was not considered particularly controversial today, but at that time, it was. Many of us who got behind this type of movement 20-something years ago were labeled as, you know, anti-business, or trying to keep, you know, dangerous buildings up. We were seen as obstructionist to the process. And I just want to say that I think opinions have now changed over that last 20-something years, and this is now viewed as something that's important work and is, is vital to maintaining our city's character. So I'm very proud of that work. I'm very proud of the revisions that went in, I believe approximately 10 years ago, too.
2003.
Yeah, so thi- this is, this is good stuff, and, yeah, I, I think as, this is important feedback that, that we're hearing from the Historic Commission. I have no problem supporting all of those. I, I think they all make a lot of sense. And I agree. I think, you know, as this has evolved more, I think the, the, the outset, the view was delaying a demolition. But it was almost viewed as sort of, "Well, you guys run along and go try and find some way to save it, but in the end, it's probably coming down." This was more of the prevailing view a long time ago. Today, I think we've gotten more mature in our view on it, and that we're really taking a conscious effort, and I think more resources have been put into preserving our historic buildings. And I think in keeping with that, I think it makes a lot of sense to change the focus. I can see why Mass Historic has the opinion that it does, which is on the name change of the ordinance. So I, I fully embrace that. It seems to make a lot of sense. So, as far as the other points that Paola made, I, I think those all make a lot of sense in terms of the, of the scope. And, and I agree. I think six months just, you know, at the time, we tried to put it at a number, right? We went from zero, and we tried to make this work at six months. And now, you know, I think it is very difficult sometimes to piece this all together for alternatives. And I think 12 months makes a lot of sense. And that's really realistic to give these type of situations their due justice. And I think the Historic Commission has been very reasonable in, in being very judicious in issuing these. Obviously, you heard the statistic here, two in recent, maybe there was one or so before. I mean, this has been really earmarked for special things of, of extreme historic value, where, you know, we really should be very careful and have a thoughtful discussion as a community if there's other alternatives. So, thank you, Paola. Thank you for you and the, and the Commission for coming forward with these suggested changes, and you certainly have my full support.
Thank you so much, Counselor Jordan, and also, since you, I know you are, you call yourself the fiscal watchdog, but one thing that I had prepared for you is also the fact that now the cost of new construction is up to $300 to $400 a square foot. So, when before, it was always cheaper to demolish and reconstruct, now people are really understanding this, a lot of the buildings were high-quality building. And also, it, it's become feasible to, to rebuild, I mean, to redevelop. And, and, and we are starting to see examples. So, people are coming in sometime to buy, to redevelop, and it's just a matter of having people holding enough to get the right, the right buyer.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Any other member of the committee wish to be heard?
Um, I, Chair Bacon?
Yes, Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, thank you, Paola, for coming and giving us the rundown of all this. I think another factor, too, as far as like not putting down buildings, is the, oh my God, it's been a long day. What, what am I looking for? The, the health benefits part of it, where, you know, building coming down, we actually, you know, shake things up in a community versus, you know, trying to keep it maintained and, you know, preserve it. I do have a question, though, I guess, for the committee or for Attorney Dagnan. I'm looking at item 10, which is the legal language. And based on the four points that Paola just said, so I see the 12, the 75 years is in that language. I see the name change preservation, change it to preservation ordinance. I want to make sure. So, item eight and number, number eight and number nine in the legal language, where it says, "No demolition permit will be issued for a period of 18 months from the date of determination." Just want to make sure that's supposed to be 12 months, or is it 18? Is, am I looking at that wrong? So, section eight and section nine?
Well, we submitted, I'm sorry, Counselor Maldonado, we submitted a revised version with suggestion. I think it's signed on 11. So, we're asking you guys to adopt the, the new version that, that we, we submitted last week. So there's only three items.
Gotcha. Yeah, but this is, these are still not in the legal language. For item 11 is that, we just need it for the, in the legal language from the Solicitor's Office, so.
So, we'll, we'll take, we'll settle for 12. Of course, we, we would love 11. I mean, 18, yes, it's been a long day. Sorry.
So, can I just jump in with a question? Attorney Dagnan?
Yes. Yes.
Is the legal, the legal language that they're requesting isn't in legal form from you yet, is it?
No, it's not.
Got it.
I haven't, I haven't seen this, so no.
Okay, so I think what we need to do as a committee is, if we're in agreement with changing the name, changing six months to 12, changing 100 years to 75, and adding, post a sign on the building if there's going to be a demo delay hearing, that we need to request legal, to put it in legal form, so it'll come back to us at a future meeting. And Paola's going to bring us some information about how many buildings there are. And then we could look over the legal form at our next meeting, and hopefully move forward with it to the council at that point.
I only have one question. I got the first three conditions, the changes that we're making. What was the fourth? I'm sorry, I missed that.
To post a sign on a building if there's going to be a demo delay hearing, so that people could see it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make a note real quick. I, I, like, item 10, this is just the one I'm referencing. It already has all this language in the ordinance language. So if that helps Attorney Dagnan with your work, just letting you know. Because a lot of what was said is under the only thing that's different, and this one I had a question on, was the 18-month versus 12, so.
Oh.
So, Counselor Maldonado Velez, is it signed by a lawyer, or is it just the language is there? I just, I don't have it right in front of me right now.
Um, it's just the language, so, yeah, it's just the language.
Yeah, so, so we need it to come to us from her, and that way it would go to council in the right form. So we would avoid redos. But, yeah, if Jeffrey could send that over to her, I'm sure it would be helpful, to your point.
Yes.
You're right in that part, for sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you.
So is the committee, how does the committee feel about that? Sending that over to legal and having it come back to us at our next meeting? Or, I don't know, Attorney Dagnan, is the next meeting, it's going to be the second Wednesday in May? Is that too quick?
No, I think I can do that. Yeah, I think I can do that.
Okay. If that's agreeable with the committee, can I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, make, make a motion that we table these four items and send it over to legal for requested legal language for us to act on it at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five, zero, so we'll look for the legal form on May 12th.
I'd like to...
I'd like to make a motion to take 15 out of order.
I'd like to make a motion to take um, fifteen out of order, um.
Yes, and um, if we can take up item, well, for item fourteen, we're just gonna move it to the May meeting. Because we don't have legal form yet.
Motion to take up item, move item fourteen to a May meeting?
Yep.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. And um, so I have a motion to take up item fifteen, which was referred to us from Finance Committee um, regarding the classification of office assistant position from W two to W seven, and we have an agreement from the union that was sent over to us. And I had asked Jeffrey if our um, human resource consulting attorney had looked at the ratings as part of the process of grading the position. And I, I don't know if in this particular situation that happens, or if it doesn't happen, but I do know that we have the union language from them before us. Jeffrey, did we ever get anything from legal, or did they not weigh in because it was a union contract?
Yeah, they, they, so they, they sent over the uh, the addendum to the union contract.
Okay, so that was their response to our request?
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So everybody, you have before you the response from legal relative to this item, which is what we had been waiting for. So is there any question um, relative to this? By members of the committee?
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, I remember getting around one of this uh, from Megan at Finance.
Oh, and you're on Finance, right. Counselor Jordan, you have the floor.
Yes, yes. Um, but maybe, Megan, for the benefit of the Ordinance Committee members, can you just give the high-level overview of why you wanna make these uh, rating changes for these employees, and, and then discuss what the financial impact is?
Um, yeah, so uh, we wanna reclassify just the office assistant position from a W two to W seven. Currently, the W two is um, rated, uh, the pay range is thirteen dollars and forty-one cents to thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, the requirements for this job uh, range from customer service, basic light bookkeeping, um, social media experience, managing and helping to train volunteers. We require a year of office experience before they can, you know, qualify for the position. Um, and so this already puts it above an entry-level position, so that pay is definitely not sufficient for the role for the museum. Um, the W seven classification would bump the pay up to seventeen dollars and two cents to seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, and based on this job market and what this position requires, we feel like that's a much more appropriate pay range um, for this role at the museum, to help us run our day-to-day operations.
So Megan, thank you. I just have a quick question, and the reason that I was wanting to hear from our attorney who looks at the rating and grading of jobs relative to what level they're put at is because I'm trying to be sure that we're not just fixing things one at a time for a person and position, but say if this is a W seven, that in a different department, the same position with the same duties would have a similar pay. So when, I, yeah?
Uh, unfortunately, I, I don't know how this lines up with other departments, because we are such a small department and we have unique needs and functions. Um, I, I do know that the W two is um, sometimes classified with just an entry-level librarian position, where like, people just restack books. Or reach out books at the library, whereas uh, the W seven pay is much closer to like, an assistant librarian position who works with the public, things like that. So I guess in, in some ways, that would be maybe comparable. Um, which is why we thought bumping it up to that would meet those requirement needs and kind of match what else is happening in the city. But again, we don't have any direct line item with another department that we could easily compare it to, unfortunately.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, the, the, the prevailing view of the Finance Committee was supportive of Megan's request, in that number one is current minimum wage is fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, so the position is already paying below minimum wage, and I know most most folks who uh, believe in some semblance of justice are appalled at the fact that municipalities uh, can be exempt from state minimum wage laws. Um, I'm one of those type of people. I just think it's beyond the alarming that the legislature continues to exempt municipalities from these rules that it applies to everybody in the private sector. Um, and then on, in January of twenty twenty-three, um, minimum wage is going to fifteen dollars. And when you think about um, the points that Megan had made, and the Finance Committee considered it, and the overall small-dollar impact this is to the budget, um, this was considered a good move to do that, you know, for this position to pay seventeen dollars is not unreasonable, and uh, you know, was, was supportive, and uh, I, I certainly will vote along those lines as well.
All right. Is that a motion?
It is, yeah, motion to adopt it.
Second.
Is there any other discussion from any committee members?
Not really discussion, but thank you, Megan, for bringing this up and paying our people, our workers what they deserve.
Thank you.
Okay. All right then, so we have a motion to adopt as uh, proposed. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Um, so this passes five to zero, and we'll go to the City Council meeting at our next meeting. Thanks for coming in, and thanks for staying with us tonight.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you all. Good night.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Second. We won't debate it. Good night, all.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, though.
But we vote on the motion to adjourn.
I think we had the motion, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes. Aye.
We're officially adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Yeah.
Thank you very much.